Morning, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting of August 12th to order. You've all received the agenda. Can I get approval for the agenda? A motion. It's moved by councillor Matheson-Laford. Can I get a second? Second by councillor Donovan. All in favor? Motion carried. You read the minutes of July 7th, 2025 council minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes? It's moved by deputy Warden McLeod. Can I get a second? Second by councillor Hennick. All in favor? Motion carried. So first we have on the agenda is presentation from Terry Smith, Mr. Terry Smith from Destination Cape Breton. Come on forward. Yeah, yes, you can. Just to make sure your mic is on and Terry, you'll have 20 minutes for the presentation and questions. I don't think we'll have to introduce ourselves since we've met a few times, right? Proceed whenever you're ready.
Well, good morning, everyone. And thanks for having me. You've got a double dose today, so my apologies in advance for that. But we'll get through a lot more this afternoon. But for right now, I just wanted to give you a quick update on a couple of things. First thing was. Here we go. Just marketing levy update. So you may be aware that on June 10th, CBRM council made the decision to keep 50% of the marketing levy funds that they collect in their jurisdiction to start their own events initiative. So this is something that we certainly didn't agree with. It was made without consultation with with us, without consultation with the tourism industry or with the other municipalities. The impact for us is that basically we've had to adjust our budget by $312,000 for this year. Most of that adjustment was made by removing all major events activities. So we would have played a part in attracting like national provincial regional sporting events like Women's World Curling that that would have been hosted last year. We would have played a key role in attracting events like that. That won't be part of what we do anymore. So we'll be more focused on on just leisure travel going ahead. We reused some operational expenses and we've made reductions in non-core marketing and destination development areas. Kind of for this year, some areas where where we thought, you know, it wasn't going to have a major impact. But the vast majority of that 312,000 would have been the major events portion. So we're losing that function and losing that portion of the budget. One thing that is important for you to note that the board directed us that the decision should not not impact the tourism industry in the other four municipalities. So any of the cuts that we've made in marketing and destination development, we'll make sure that not none of that impacts the industry in Victoria County. On the other side of things, CBRM is still projected to be the second largest contributor. They were the largest contributor of marketing levy funds. They will still be the second largest, so still a major player. But certainly, you know, it's it's something that we didn't agree with, but something that moving forward, it's been passed and we have to live with it and make the best of it going forward. To give you a sense of some things that are happening on a more positive note, marketing, our main campaign has been performing really well. Summer campaign just wrapped up. Our fall campaign is starting shortly. And we advertise in Ontario, Quebec, Calgary and the Maritimes. We've had a number of social media influencer visits recently, and this is a couple of clips from one of our our recent visitors, Caroline Elcoury, who spent a fair bit of time in Victoria County. Everybody that's come has spent some time in your county, the social media visitors. We had a couple from Calgary come recently. We've been trying to make inroads in that market, especially with the WestJet direct flight now from Calgary to Sydney twice a week. Waterfall season, that was a spring initiative that we've been doing past couple of years. And we're seeing, you know, some really, really good growth there in terms of our activity. And one of the big things is that we have an app where people go when they go around to different waterfalls. There's a QR code at each and they can scan that and and our app downloads. We had a 52% increase. So there was good growth there in terms of the spring season. We just launched a new website. I'll go over that a little bit more this afternoon. But encouraging results so far. And just last week, actually, we did shooting for a new 2026 campaign. Significant amount of Victoria County content there. And it's a bit of a different approach. We're we're using humor for the first time ever in our campaign, but I think it's going to be really good. And we also, marketing wise, recently in June, had a booth at the International Snowmobile Congress, which was held in PEI and TNT Ventures, based in Hunter's Mountain, represented the island there for us. From a destination development perspective, the Cabot Trail 100th anniversary, an initiative that was started started here by Victoria County and really, you know, spearheaded initially by Dan Coffin. We're working on an engagement plan that will will be rolling out this fall. And there's an awareness video in development that should be out within the next couple of weeks. Over the past year, we've been working on a sustainable tourism plan. And the final plan is is going to be rolled out in just a few weeks as well. We partner with Nova Scotia Indigenous Tourism Enterprise Network. And we're working with them on on a memorandum of understanding. But recently, we supported them in an experience development program. And we had one business participating from from Wagmacook. Actually, it was was pictured there, Mary Louise Bernard. And so that was great to see. There's a pilot program that we've been involved in. It's just us and Yarmouth with Tyance. That's the Tourism Industry Association of Nova Scotia. It's an HR advisory program, but it provides a lot of education and training for industry. And just to let you know that so far, it's just about wrapping up the pilot. But there were 33 industry members that received training through that in Victoria County. And we're also working on a concierge program with our visitor information centers. We conducted a fam tour and actually additional training as well with VIC councillors. So that would include BIDEC and that that fam tour happened in May. We're also in the midst of an accommodation needs assessment. The study was initiated in June. It will be completed by the end of September. So try to give it give us a sense of are do we have needs in terms of accommodations in other parts of the island, around the island? And we'll we'll see what the result comes out. Just some results year to date. So most of what we do, we're driving people to the website. Last year, we hit a record number on our website. We had a bigger budget with the increased marketing levy. So that was expected. But this year, we're on pace to surpass that by some margin. So sessions or traffic to our website is up 28% and clicks to our operator website. So clicks from our website out to tourism businesses and organizations are up 8%. That tells us that people are serious and that they're in planning mode. So that that's a good indicator to see. All of our markets are up and we do do a bit more just because when you're looking at it this time of year, the Maritimes is a lot higher because that's where most of our focus was for the winter and the spring. But certainly, Ontario, Quebec and Alberta, most of that would have been on spring, summer so far. And we'll be starting at the fall. Yep. That's year over year. Yeah, yeah. Room nights sold. We only have this up till the end of April. And so they're down 8%. Most of that. So speaking of the major events, but in March last year, we would have hosted the Women's World Curling Championship. And and so that's where most of that drop in March comes from. Had a little bit of an earlier end to winter than for snowmobiling than we would have liked. And then a little bit bit of a decline in April. But you're going to see that those numbers are going to completely turn around as we come after those months. So this is short-term rental units nights sold. So we do have this data right up to the end of July. And and this is specific to Victoria County, but it's a similar story for the whole island as well. So as you can see there, although the provincial stats in terms of accommodations are down a little bit in April. In Victoria County, short-term rentals were up. May it's up, June as well, and July was was up significantly. So 13% increase year to date. So it's not always an indicator of how all of the accommodations are going to do, but it but it's a decent indicator. But the average daily rate is is up as well with short-term rentals about 10%. We also have data that shows bookings in short-term rentals in August and and September and October. And bookings are looking like they're pacing well ahead of last year as well. So hopefully, you know, we know that there's lots of people around. So it's looking like it's going to be a pretty strong summer and fall. We also look at Parks Canada sites and focus on your your county. But so Alexander Graham Bell National Historic Site is up 25%. The National Park Camping, because they have free admission this year, it's a little bit. We don't get won't get their full admission stats until the end of the year, they've they've told us. So it's a little bit harder for them to track that when people don't. They buy a national pass rather than buying a pass right for the National Park. But Camping was up 23% to the end of July. So positive, positive news. And that's about it. Any questions?
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for Terry? Councillor Born?
Thank you for that presentation. Just one question with your the 13% up year to date. And I think you have it for your source, Airbnb?
It's it's a company called AirDNA, but they track Airbnb.
All through different platforms.
VRBO.
Okay, just the two platforms. Okay.
But that would be the vast majority.
Okay, that was the question. Thank you.
Anyone else? I'm gonna ask you something, Terry. The influx of tourism this year, we see it everywhere. Matter of fact, I've seen somebody camping in the, I'm gonna say the ditch, we call it the drain, in on Smokey today and on Tent. Which is it's illegal because if you're camping, you should be in a campsite. But there's sites of boondocking camping have. We're not, do we cover those or they? Can they come on? It's called boondocking. It's a free website, like say, I could say, hey, beautiful site here at Red Cove, just off the road, free camping. We're getting a lot of that in Victoria County. A lot of residents are complaining about it because where do these people use washrooms and things like that? So we can't tell if if any of those people are using our websites for anything like that. Are they like?
Oh, well, we certainly wouldn't promote.
No, no, I know. We're not promoting.
But yeah, I'm not aware of of that. Yeah. We've heard of people, yeah, just parking in parking lots wherever they want. But yeah.
There's a little spot in Niels Harbor that's. I mean, there was seven parked in there the other night that just like.
Wow.
Yeah. Since you can't go on Crown Land right now. Because of the fire ban. But anyways, any other questions for Terry? I guess well, I might have more for you later. Anyways.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mandy Kay Raining Bird for the Basic Income Nova Scotia presentation. Come on forward.
Which one is yours? This one here. And it's not. You can see. Oh, it must be that. I'm sorry. Any videos or anything?
I don't want to play the video. There is one video that might try to play, but I'll.
Welcome to Victoria County Council. I'll get the councillors to introduce themselves and then you can introduce your comrade there. We'll start here.
Good morning and welcome. Thank you so much for coming. I'm councillor Donna Matheson-Laford and I am District One. Thank you.
Good morning. Preg MacLeod, Deputy Warden, District Two, will be Big BIDEC, Middle River, Nayan Saba Dake Inlet. Welcome.
Thank you.
Good morning and welcome. Nice to see you again. And my name is Rosalba Born and I am in District Four.
Good morning. My name is Fraser Patterson. I'm the. It's on. Yep. My name is Fraser Patterson. I'm the councillor for District Five, which is basically the other side of Kelly's Mountain, part of Victoria County. So welcome.
Thank you.
Morning. My name's Tim Donovan. I'm councillor for District Six, which is Ding Anishia area base.
Good morning and welcome. I'm Wanda Hennick. I'm in District Eight, which would be Dingwall, Cape North, Basin, Lawrence and Capstick. Welcome.
My name is Jackie Jorgan and I am councillor and warden for District Seven. Welcome. You have 20 minutes for your presentation and for questions. And make sure the little green light is on in your mic when you speak.
Okay, so we have 20 minutes for both, not not 30 minutes. Oh, 20 minutes. Okay, well, I'm gonna have to. Twenty minutes. Okay. Well, I'm gonna have to.
Can we steal the five that I didn't need for the tourism presentation? Pardon? I said there was six minutes left over from the tourism. Can we steal that? Just trying. Thank you.
No. Okay, so we'll speak fast. So my name is Mandy K. Raininbird. My official name is Elizabeth. It looks like I'm an Indigenous woman, if you look at my name, but in fact, I was married to an Indigenous man. I myself am not Indigenous. My children are. And this is Pierre Stevens. The two of us represent Basic Income Nova Scotia, but we are also involved with both regional and federal advocacy groups for basic income. How do I move this forward like that? Okay, so I'm gonna talk, or we're gonna talk about who we are, what a basic income is and why it's needed. Why municipalities are important. And then we'll open it up for questions. Hopefully we not, we'll have enough time for that. So Basic Income Nova Scotia was started in twenty fifteen. We're a registered society. We are Nova Scotia volunteers. And we advocate for a livable basic income through outreach, education and informed conversation. We do so at the grassroots level and I want to shout out to the community health boards in the eastern zone who have been extremely helpful in advocating for a basic income in this area. And we advocated all levels of government. We've held six conferences to date. And we network with other groups, Indigenous, provincial, regional and national organizations, as I mentioned. So now we'll talk about what a big is and why. The definition of a big is that it is a direct payment from government to ensure that everyone has a sufficient income to meet their basic needs, participate in society and live with dignity regardless of work status. It's income tested, but it does not involve any other intrusive or demeaning or stigmatizing requirements or oversight for its implementation. The maximum benefit would be given to somebody with no other income and it gradually reduces as, as income rises. The organizations across Canada have agreements that a big should follow the following principles, that it should be an essential component of abroad safety, not, not replacing other essential supports and services. That it should be universally accessible. That does not mean that everybody gets it. It means that everybody who needs it gets it. So it's income tested, as I mentioned before. It's unconditional. That is, it's subject only to income, but not other requirements, as I mentioned before. It should be sufficient, set at a livable level. It should be responsive to changing circumstances, so nimble and, and able to follow people's needs as they arise. For example, if somebody needs to escape a, an abusive relationship, they should be able to access that quite quickly. It's respectful of autonomy and payable to individuals to be used at their sole discretion. And it's respectful of Indigenous self-determination. We all know that poverty is high across Canada. And in this slide, you can see that Nova Scotia itself has a, about twenty-three point eight percent of our population is living in poverty. And on the right-hand side, you can see how, how insufficient social assistance is for people who are living in poverty. So the gray line is deep poverty and the black line is the poverty level as defined by M B M. And social assistance rates for various groups are shown as, as blocks of color, so well below the deep poverty line. And of course, we know that poverty costs, poverty costs. A twenty-twenty-one analysis showed that poverty costs the Atlantic provinces about four and a half billion dollars across Canada, about eighty-five billion dollars per year. Affordability is a problem, as we all know. We have high food prices. We have high housing prices. And why do we need a big then? Because we all deserve an income floor below which we cannot fall. Many are income secure, as you saw before, or living in poverty or one paycheck away from poverty. These people could be homeless, be working precarious jobs, temporary, part-time, or they may have lost their jobs and aren't covered with E I. Medical difficulties can arise that put you, make you stay at home, caregiving needs, fleeing abuse, fires, floods. We know that these are substantial problems right now. Hugh Siegel has, has said that poverty is the best predictor of early illness, early hospitalizations, longer hospital stays and earlier death. It is a reliable predictor of substance abuse, food insecurity, poor education outcomes and for some trouble with the law. That's why poverty costs us so much. Big would be a proactive rather than a reactive policy. We're always trying to run after emergencies as they arrive and help people. This would be there when people need it, if it's climate catastrophes, pandemics, Trump's tariffs, et cetera. Research shows that big helps. It radically reduces poverty and food insecurity. It improves mental and physical health. It, it decreases violent and property crime. It improves housing quality and safety, reduces high school dropout rates, increases engagement in post-secondary education. It stimulates urban and rural economies because people spend their money in those economies. They don't go down to Florida to, to spend their money. It has little effect on paid work engagement and funnily enough, it increases trust in government. Pierre now is going to be speaking.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, let's see the next slide, please. So first, I want to present you with the profile for Victoria County. And, and I'm sure you're all familiar with it, the biggest population group, fifteen to sixty-four, is also the one that has the, the minimum social support groups. And we find nowadays actually that probably the highest poverty rates in that group. We also can see the income distribution for Victoria County. And if you sort of, let's say, take the first three columns together, you get roughly the group that lives in poverty, which is over thirty percent. And next slide, please. What I tried to do in, in, in my presentation is show the importance of a basic income, not only for the individual, but also for the community and also for the country. So let's, Mandy didn't mention how a basic income works. She, she said sort of it gradually decreases with income. So let's have a look how that dynamic works out for individuals on their own and individuals among each other. So for instance, the first income recipient has no income. Let's say we had a model of basic income with a twenty-four thousand dollars a year payout and a forty percent clawback rate. What the clawback rate means is if you have income, forty percent of that income gets deducted from your basic income benefit. So with no income, nothing gets deducted and that person gets twenty-four thousand. So that person has gone from zero income to twenty-four thousand. Next slide. Let's see, you had an income recipient that has a fifteen thousand dollar income. Now forty percent of that fifteen thousand, which is six thousand, gets clawed back from the basic income benefit, leaving them with a benefit entitlement of eighteen thousand, giving them a total income of thirty-three thousand. Next one, let's say we had one with thirty-five thousand, a forty percent clawback now is fourteen thousand, leaving them with a basic income still of ten thousand and a total income of forty-five thousand. Now what this shows is a couple of things. First of all, you see that even somebody who lives above the poverty line, thirty-five thousand, still gets a basic income benefit. So a basic income is not only for people living in poverty, but it is for everybody in the community up to an income level of sixty thousand dollars. The second thing you see is that the income inequality among the three people. The first income has zero income and the third one, thirty-five thousand, that's a thirty-five thousand dollar gap. That gets reduced by basic income from twenty-four thousand to forty-five thousand. It gets reduced to twenty-one thousand dollar gap. That's important because income inequality affects social capital. It affects cultural capital and it affects financial, economic capital. And that is all important for the community because people who have, who are lacking in those kinds of capital cannot contribute to society. Next slide, please. So if people get, depending on the model that we have for basic income, there's a cumulative income coming to Victoria County because of the thirty percent of the population will get a basic income. Actually, no. Under these models, you can see that the top model, ninety-two percent of the, of the Victoria County population will benefit to some extent, getting a total of eighty-two million transfer. And then the lowest one, the red one, which is probably the model that is at the moment the most in favor. And that's probably sort of where the, the direction that is going. There we see that still sixty-six percent of the population will benefit. It will have an increase, total increase in transfers of fourteen million dollars. That fourteen million dollars ends up in the Victoria County economy through the hands of the income recipients, but it gets spent locally. The impact, so this shows a little bit of how the different income populations under the different models would benefit. And you can see again, of course, the highest benefits are with the lowest income. But you see benefits depending on the model, up to the sixty, seventy thousand dollar income bracket. Which model we're gonna end up with, one doesn't know. It's up to the, up to, up to politicians, you know. But you see the impacts of different models. The stingier the model, of course, the less money flows into Victoria County. Next slide, please. Now I want to have a look at what a basic income means for individuals. Let's say you had an, an income of ten thousand with the way the basic income works. Sorry, without a basic income, and you pay for housing and so on, you end up with two hundred thirty dollars a month for, for paying for everything that needs to be paid for. You know, I say like food, utilities, transportation, you name it. The, the consequence of the income assistance program that we have is that on the micro level, people cannot do anything. There is no financial capital. On the macro level, it means there is nothing that these people on income assistance can contribute to, to, to the Victoria County. Now what happens when that same person gets a basic income? And let's simply assume one model. That person's ten thousand dollar income goes up to twenty-two, sorry, goes up to thirty thousand, paying the same amount of rent, they suddenly have a remainder of twenty-two thousand dollars a year. Now they suddenly have economic capital and they can start to think about, you know, let's say like improving their social capital, maybe they go and get an education, whatever. But they can finally exit the poverty trap and provide economic activity for the county. You know, if you really want to dream big, let's say you had a, a person with no income. They got a basic income of twenty-four thousand and they decide to be entrepreneurial and they start a daycare center. Now they get income, but then of course, from that income, they have to pay, they sort of, let's say, lose some of the basic income benefit. But from no income, with an entrepreneurial activity, they go from twenty-four thousand to thirty-one thousand, six hundred dollars. Not only that, if they took six children, they now also provide six mothers the opportunity to take, participate in the Victoria County economy. So we see not only economic mobility for the individual, but also for the county. And if we think about a basic income as rethinking social assistance, instead of creating barriers, we now are assisting people in potentially becoming entrepreneurs, self-reliance, their freedom to dream, to, 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 to make social contacts, to make cultural contacts and to basically, you know, say like decrease the inequality that also is harmful for the country at large. Because the larger the inequality is, the more we get social unrest and the more we get financial disasters. The, the, the years with the highest inequality, which was nineteen thirty-two and two thousand and eight, we saw financial collapse and the people that, that, you know, we know who suffers from financial collapses.
So we believe that municipalities can make a big difference here. As former Halifax Mayor Mike Savage, who is a big proponent of a basic income, said, the feds have the money, the provinces have the jurisdiction and the municipalities have the problems. You probably recognize that. But your voices can be strong and can really help to move the dial forward. So far, nineteen Nova Scotia municipalities have passed motions in support of a basic income. And the most recently, those were in Saint Mary's and Clare and in Geisborough. That's one of our Basic Income Nova Scotia members has estimated covers about eighty-five percent of, of the Nova Scotian population. So about eighty-five percent of the population lives in these municipalities. The Nova Scotia Federation of Municipalities has passed a resolution in support of a basic income, and I put the wording here. And the Atlantic Mayor's Congress has passed a resolution in support as well, and I put their wording here. And we really thank you very much for, for inviting us here. We hope that this presentation has helped you to make your decision. We know that a motion is being brought forward by Donna Matheson-LeFort today. And, and we look forward to hearing the result. We're happy we have nearly three minutes to answer questions if you have any.
Thank you. I will start. Does anybody have any questions for Counselor Pierre Patterson?
Thank you, Warden. Thank you for the presentation. I guess I'm dating myself, but this idea goes back to the sixties probably. I think the Liberal Government at the time had worked out a scheme, or not a scheme, I guess, but a, a plan. And I believe the province of Manitoba came very close to setting it up. But the question I have, I noticed that one of your references referred to Finland. So Finland?
Finland.
Oh, Finland, yeah.
So what other countries have instituted something like this?
Yeah. Well, Finland did a pilot study, but did not institute a, a basic income fully. Brazil has instituted what they call Bolsa Família. And that was a basic income for people living in poverty with a one additional requirement besides income, and that was that the children go to school. And that was because many families living in poverty, it's deep poverty, it was deep poverty, needed their, their children to help support them. And so the children would go out and work at very young ages. So with the basic income, they were able to go to school and get an education. So those are two countries that right now there is a basic income that's being provided to artists in Ireland. And that basic income is, is helping them to be able to focus their attention upon their passion and their ability. Also, there's basic incomes that have been provided on a pilot level for people who are homeless, both in B C and in two cities in the United States, showing that they did not drink or use drugs anymore than a control group, but that they got secure housing and, and were able to find jobs more easily. So, so there's a lot of pilots, there's, and a lot of trials, so we need to just move forward.
Actually, there's one country which. Actually, there's one country which has implemented basic income very successfully, and that is Canada. The O A S and G I C.
G I S.
G I S is a basic income program, but it's only for people sixty five and older. And what we are finding now is that the income group between sixteen and sixty four is the one living in the highest, with the highest poverty rates, and there is nothing there. Another thing to keep in mind is that in the nineteen eighties, Canada drastically cut income transfers for social assistance programs and so on. We've never recovered from that. Other countries, you know, say like have far superior social assistance programs compared to Canada. So the need in Canada is very strong, while the need in other countries is probably not as strong. So anyway, that was just, you know, I'd say, but we have a very successful income assistance program.
And there's been some really good research done on O A S, G I S, that shows that with the increase in income for people in that sixty five and up age group, there was also, even though they were getting older, an increase in health. And that we expect to happen with anybody who receives a basic income.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councillor Bourne?
Thank you for that. Just to clarify, would the basic income enhance present programs or replace programs? I'm just looking at that from a financial standpoint, are we adding money to or replacing?
It would replace, it would replace social assistance programs, though you may be aware that there was a report that came out in P E I that is proposing a basic income, islandwide basic income program. And they would maintain social assistance on an emergency basis so that there could be some rapid response to people that need. But otherwise, yeah, that would be replaced. Other programs, it's possible that some sort of tax, what do you call them, tax?
Credits?
Yeah, tax credits would be replaced. But no, not programs that support, for example, health, that support mental health, that support education, those essential programs need to be maintained, and we see a basic income as complementing, not replacing, social supports within our system. And in fact, many of those supports need enhancement themselves. So for example, our mental health system, as you're well aware, needs additional enhancements.
I think it is also important to distinguish between financial programs and services. You know, say, social services as they are provided by provinces, you know, as a community development, they, we would like to see them enhanced. You know, because more money could become available for them if social assistance gets absorbed in basic income. But financial policies such as tax credits and so on, like for instance, a low income tax credit can be absorbed in basic income because it serves exactly the same thing. So there are, again, there are already transfer programs in place. And actually, looking at the cost of a basic income, the Parliamentary Budget Office has just issued a report that shows that, you know, a basic income could cost maybe the country fifty, fifty seven billion dollars.
Fifty three billion.
Yeah, well, hold on. Gross cost fifty three billion and three billion dollars in behavioral cost, meaning people take a fifteen minute coffee break. But it also came out that that fifty three billion dollar cost can be totally absorbed by existing transfer programs that already exist. So the net cost of a basic income to Canada would be around three and a half billion dollars. And with that, we could wipe out poverty. And up to now, the government hasn't found that money, but they find hundred sixty billion dollars to go to the army, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. Really appreciate you having us here, and we look forward to hearing what happened.
Going to take a ten minute recess.
Hey, welcome back. We'll go into council discussions. We'll start with the AMANS Fall Conference sponsorship. Yeah, so I am on the board of the AMANS Executive. AMANS is the Association of Municipal Administrators of Nova Scotia. We are hosting our Fall Conference in Sydney. Usually, the region of the conference is asked to sponsor. A package was sent out, and I was sent out or included in your council package. The ask of Victoria County for helping to host this conference is twenty five hundred dollars. So I'm wondering if that is something the council is interested in in helping to do. Also, we thought, so there was a different Also, we thought, so there was different levels of sponsorship that were within the package, the sponsorship package. I have spoken to Richmond and Inverness County, who are both in on sponsoring. CBRM is also in on sponsoring. I thought if we partnered up with Inverness and Richmond and Port Hoxbury, that we outside of CBRM could put together even a larger package so that we looked like we were able to basically compete with CBRM with their sponsorship. So I was just wondering if council would be interested in sponsoring the Association of Municipal Administrators Conference.
Any questions or comments for Leanne here? Leanne, did we sponsor last year? Did we?
It wasn't in this area, so it moves around.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it comes here probably once every three to four years. We usually try to get it here in Bedeck or somewhere in Victoria County. The only place at this time is in Bedeck. But it wasn't, it was already investigated and booked into Sydney before they started. It wasn't booked here this year.
Counselor Matheson-Lefort, do we have to make that a motion?
I would, yeah. Yes, I believe so, for anything over 1,000.
Okay, I'd like to move that we sponsor the AMAN's Conference to the tune of $2,500.
There's a motion on the floor. Can I get a second or? Seconded by Deputy Warden McLeod. All in favor?
Thank you very much.
That's great. Okay, Leanne, you're gonna talk on the second one, too, the Inverness County?
Yeah, I'm just gonna, let me see if I can find this here. So we received a letter from Inverness County in relation to the Inverness County Asylum Commemoration Project. They were telling us about a farm property near Mabu, Nova Scotia, that was an asylum back from 1889 to 1947. It was administered through Inverness County under a provincial statute. During its operation, the asylum housed people with intellectual disabilities, mental illness, and other deemed harmless insane by the standards of the time. They were, they tell us that there was several residents of all counties within the island, including Victoria County. And given Victoria County's historical connection to the institute, Inverness County wishes to invite members of council staff and the wider community to learn more about the initiative and explore a collaborative approach in commemorating the facility and those who died there. Representatives from the project, including staff from Inverness County, elected officials, and community volunteers will be pleased to attend an upcoming meeting of council. So just wondering if I took to share some more information about it. Wondering if that is something that council is interested in learning more about.
Is it a motion that?
Yeah, I think so.
Can I get a motion either way if we're listening for more information to join in this project?
Yeah, I'm with the motion if they can come to council and give us a presentation. And yeah.
It's moved by Deputy Ward McLeod and seconded by Counselor Matheson-Lefort. The motion is to have them come to council and tell us more about the project. All in favor? Motion's carried.
Great.
Okay, next is the mobile food vending draft bylaw. Ms. McLeod.
Good morning, everybody, again. Yeah, so it was requested by council to have staff look into a mobile vending bylaw. And I think the councillors who got back to me with their suggestions, and I hope I captured those suggestions that were brought forward. Hopefully, you all have had a chance to go over it. So if you have any questions or other suggestions, or just wanna have a discussion about it and give us a direction if we are going to first reading with this. Just to be clear, this is not first reading. This is just a discussion on the bylaw.
Anyone have any questions? Deputy Warden?
Yeah, just checking that, for example, in the environment responsibilities, when they say repeat offense may result in fines on permit suspension or revocation. We, I was suggesting, we're not talking about fines there, but maybe like it will be a big fine in case.
Like a, sorry, under what section?
Environment responsibility, the last one. So it's repeat offense may result in fines. So I just wonder, are we going to put in the amount as well, or?
We can, if that's council's direction.
So if you could check it out, if like a big fine, because that way.
So I think that the fine is there per law under enforcement and penalties? So it would be a fine up to 250 per offense? Or?
Yeah, it's, yeah.
Yeah, or it would be a revocation of their permit. So if they are doing any of those things, I would think the first one would be a, well, depends on how we administer it, but I would think that the first time is a fine. Maybe first is a warning, second is a fine, third is a revocation.
Okay, yeah, so the 50, I think, is too small to be defined. So I wondered if we can have a conversation about maybe a $500. Like a, have to be, you know, we have to make the statement, it's have to follow the bylaws. Because do we have somebody to supervise, to enforce the bylaw?
Not yet.
So at least without a big fine.
Yeah, so RCMP can enforce these for us.
Yeah.
But it is something we're still working on. It's hard to get a bylaw officer.
Yeah, I know. That way, maybe with a fine, a little high.
Suggesting a fine right off the, like, right away?
And a higher fine.
First, the warning, and then we say, you know, if you comply again, it will be.
Okay, yeah, we can change that, yep.
And what about, we're talking about food, mobile food. This include the permits for like a fisherman or the vendors that come to here for the meat. The small vendors, sometimes they are in residential property?
It didn't really cover that. It was just mobile food vending. And it came out of a result of restaurant operators and fairness. We can certainly include that as part of the bylaw, but as of right now, we do not.
Yeah, because they're going to be around, I think, just to have the permit, right? Like, they're going to come, fishermen and meat, or maybe the fee for the small vendors will be less, the fee. But I don't know, I don't see the fairness, just put trucks and then rest there, you know, because that is a backlash. I get, I got these couple of weeks. So what about them, right? So.
So technically, wouldn't food qualify under the, like, so I know that our peddler's bylaw currently that we are repealing, that is in place right now, it exempts food from the land or the sea. But this says a mobile vendor, which is a temporary structure to sell food or beverages. Yeah, so it's basically this one, you could refer to it as like a restaurant on wheels, which is what we were trying to address as the issue. I don't know if there has been complaints about the fish truck or the meat truck selling just a, like, they're not selling meals, they're selling you fresh goods.
Right, but is that considered food, I wonder?
It's probably, yeah, and again, this is under the direction of council. So whatever you guys see fit to be within this bylaw, we can certainly add it, and we can go from there.
Counselor Matheson-Lefort?
I, that was just one of the notes that I had. If you're comparing a food service vehicle, which might be a large, you know, food stand, to like a bicycle wagon selling ice cream on the back. I was just wondering if that.
You could say lemonade stand, too. I mean, it depends on how much, how much you wanna drill down here on this.
Well, my, my biggest thing was, I just, I looked, and I know you did as well. I know you looked at other sites. I just noticed that, like, for, you know, a food service vehicle might have an annual fee from another one of the counties of like a little over 1,000. But then like a bicycle wagon selling ice cream would only have it 190. So I'm wondering if we should differentiate for just a few different things, like, we're not looking at the same price.
And, and all under the one bylaw?
Yeah, and, and another thing, I was looking at the, the fees for the daily and the event permit. This is just me. I'm wondering if the daily permit of $100 a day for a non-event is a little high. I'd almost switch it because it has event permit 50, but daily permit 100. And I think with an event, you're guaranteed usually, you have your captive crowd or audience. You're guaranteed to make more money, that maybe we should be charging more for events and then maybe less for daily. But again, this is just something I'm suggesting, some just. And the last thing, did you see or think of the inside versus outside of the municipality? So if vendors are coming from CBRM here, or will they pay the same fee that Victoria County vendors might pay? Because I know some counties do that, not us and us versus, you know.
I did not look at that.
Yeah, some of them.
So all of those are, this is what council, this is council's role to govern, to create the bylaws. So all of those are great questions.
Okay.
Another one is, like, if it's non-food, or the peddler's bylaw, which we currently are repealing, allows them to come in, but should they be charged a fee also? I mean, and under that, a food truck that is selling, if they sell fish and chips, well, then they're excluded from that under our current bylaw because fish is from the sea. And they could say that about their burgers, too. So, I mean, it depends on the direction from council and how, for lack of a better term, how nitty gritty you guys wanna get on this. So we can certainly take back all this feedback and, and make the changes.
Just about your vending zone and restrictions. Vending is not permitted in resident zones unless part of the special vendor with writing permission from the municipality and the landowner. I think, why the municipality have to be there? Why is not, because it's residential, why just there is the person, you know, the business and the person? Why we have to be there in the municipality, have to be there?
Issue the permit, the permit would be issued from the municipality.
But if he is, he parks in a private, in a residential driveway, why the municipality have to be permitted? It's not commercial.
Still municipal bylaw. Like, it's the same as any bylaws, just because you have a private residential place, it doesn't exempt you from following any other bylaws. And I guess. Still a permit that you have to get from the municipality. Yeah, that would be a way around. You know, we have an issue with RVs parked somewhere and not paying tax and, and getting the benefit of the use of the land. This would be the same thing. So if somebody wanted to, let's say, start a fish and chip truck in their yard, they just park it in their yard, and then they get the benefit of not even being mobile, but sitting in a, in a yard. So I think if you only give it to the landowner, they put it on their own land, they get it tax-free and without a buy, without a vending bylaw or without a permit. So I think that catches those ones.
Okay, thanks. And the last one, so funny, like, yesterday was the festival, and you have all these vendors and stuff. How is it going to happen for the next, we do this bylaw with the food trucks, they're not allowed to be close to another restaurants?
That's why we have the event permit, and concessions can be made for one-off events, yeah. Which is why it's separate, yep.
Okay.
Counselor Matheson-Lefort?
I just wanted to say thank you for putting it together. Thanks, because I, if I, yeah, I wasn't sure how it would look based on all suggestions, but, yeah, no, it's pretty good. Thanks.
Leanne Born?
Thank you. Most of my questions were answered, but I just have two, just, I'm not sure if we can do this or not, if it makes sense. A suggestion would be to have a map of the zones, because I think we refer to residential versus like the different zones, so that we know immediately when they're looking at something visually. And the second thing, when it comes to nuisance, for a generator must not create a nuisance. Well, yesterday, there was a lot of them, and they did create a lot of nuisance. So do we, do we clarify that with a level of, you know, you can do that measurement of noise? Like, how do we measure what a nuisance is to people?
I think for this, it would be how much the neighbors are going to complain that the generator is running. Honestly, I mean, if we're gonna get into measuring decibels, I think that's real, that's gonna be a little more difficult. But I think if, if there are numerous complaints from numerous people about generators, then I think that we take that under consideration.
And that is also another bylaw that we started a few years ago, which was community standards bylaw.
It was a community standards bylaw.
Which talked about noise disruption. And if I, yeah, so at some point, we'll get back to that, I would think. We, that's been tabled for a while, that one. So, so I think that the noise piece would, or what causes a disruption is included in that other one.
That would be, there is a decibel portion within that community standards bylaw. So we could always, saying this goes through and the community standards goes through, they work in conjunction together, yes.
I just, our MLA just said that fishermen selling are controlled by the province, so they have to have a license from the province. But that doesn't mean that they have a.
So currently, that's pretty much what we refer to as well. And the vendors are pretty good, like, I've, I get calls from them quite often, and they are very good to call ahead of time and say, I'm coming, is it okay if I set up here or there? And I always just defer them to their provincial permits and regulations. As long as they're following those, then we have no issue with it because we don't have a solid bylaw to say otherwise. So as long as, and that's including in this as well. They still have to, which is, it says in here, they still have to follow provincial regulations and have their permits and licensing.
Go ahead.
So, like, at the end of the day, what is council trying to accomplish with this bylaw? If it is to make sure that it's safe food, or is it to capture a fee from those coming into the, to the area because there's fixed accommodation businesses already? Like, is that, what is the most important thing, or what is council trying to accomplish with this? So I guess we just need your thoughts on that.
Counselor Donovan?
Well, my thought is that the reason for the bylaw, or at least in my opinion, is to not only allow them the opportunity to have the mobile, mobile food trucks providing the service, which I know in our area is much appreciated because it's busy and there are only so many restaurants. But at the same time, protect the brick and mortar restaurants from being squeezed out, I guess. Because I know that I've noticed this summer in particular, the restaurants are all incredibly busy, to the point where there's wait times, which, which are getting frustrating for some of the patrons. But they have to realize that you can only do so much so fast. And the food trucks are actually taking a little bit of that pressure away. So again, my thought was not to make it, not to make it impossible for them to operate, or not to make it more difficult for them to operate, but at the same time, protect the brick and mortar restaurants from being pushed aside.
So I guess is $300 enough or little enough to do that? Is, because you wanna make it affordable, but to, you wanna make it affordable, but you also want, if you wanna protect the other ones, you wanna make it fair. So.
Yeah, the fees, I think they're fine, just. Um, yeah, um, the fees, I think they're fine, just now with the observation of Councilor Matheson about the event and daily permit, maybe switch them, like a daily payment 50, event 100, because as she say, uh, the only thing I'm not agree will be like, uh, charge more because you're out of the county. I think, um, fairness and inclusivity for us, uh, they bring the business to our residents. So I think they can, is a welcome way to, to make business. So that's the only thing I will be no agree. But the rest is, looks very good. Thanks. And thank you for the clarifications about that.
Counselor Hennick?
Yes, I totally agree with switching the, the event and the, uh, the daily permit also. You know, we're looking at protecting air, air, Victoria County with our businesses, especially say if you have a, a meat truck that pulls into an area. And so that's taken away from the local grocery stores, the, the, the co-ops and all that, that's in our area because they're offering a cheaper product or an easier access to get it. But in the long run, it's, it's help, it's hurting the business owners in the area. So by having it maybe, um, uh, a fee maybe for the, the local people in the area, but then charging a little more for the outsider one set come into Victoria County. Cause like say in the fall, I think through Celtic colors, they do like a food truck run that goes right around the trail. And most of the time it's from vendors outside of Victoria County that, that come in. So that's my take on it.
But are they bringing more business?
Yeah.
Into Victoria County? That, that's, that's the double edged sword here.
And remember the competition, uh, I understand the call, it will be the call up there. And that why the prices are high, in my opinion, because it's not competition. Nobody comes and compete with them and make a fair. Because if you go to Sydney, it will be five dollars less for what you're buying. So I think when they come, you know, the, everybody is welcome for the meat, for the fish and, and the local vegetables. Just, uh, I think, I'm not agree with you with that, but, uh, I, I understand your point as well. But, uh, I think making welcome, you know, they're trying to make a living as well. So I think just welcoming and, and buy the product is a good deed for them and for us.
Counselor Born?
That's just a comment, because we're going to be reviewing this every two years. And I think even if we pilot it out and get it ready and we might have some changes as we go, but that's just my, my thought.
Uh, so we can certainly make those changes. So is it the direction of council to make those changes? And send it out and prepare for first reading of this bylaw in the next council session?
I just have one comment before we get to that. So are we including fish and meat and, and not prepared food? Uh, but food, land and sea food. So meat trucks, fish trucks, um, the sorts. Are we including those in here as a mobile food vending bylaw? Or are they encompassed in the word food?
Counselor Patterson?
Yeah, thank you. Well, I, I think it's a bit broader than that too, because I saw, um, this weekend a massive trailer selling T-shirts and so on and so forth. Uh, it wasn't in Victoria County, uh, it was in Menor, I believe. Uh, does anyone else see it?
Victoria County, they're from New Brunswick.
Okay, that's what I'm saying. These are mobile, obviously, so they could be anywhere. So again, or, or they're taking away from the store or whatever else sells clothing and so on. Um, so I think, you know, in the end, maybe we have to broaden the whole thing.
Well, I think right now we're dealing with, we should deal with food and then the vending. Are we going to have?
Okay, deal with, deal with food separately and then do the others.
And then we'll.
Okay.
We have a different bylaw.
We, we do have a peddler's bylaw.
That we.
Okay.
Got rid of, sort of, right?
Well, not yet. No.
Well, maybe we'll be.
Yeah. So I'm sorry, I'm just, I, I think I need better direction. Are we talking about a mobile vending bylaw then? Not a mobile food vending bylaw? What are, what's the direction of council now at this point? If, if Counselor Patterson, you're bringing up now, um, other goods. Um, I don't see what the point of having three bylaws for basically the same thing. So I, I think I need better direction from council now as to where I'm going with this.
Counselor Matheson LaForte?
I, I think it's all doable. We just have to basically expand our definition category and go back and say, you know, when we're looking at mobile vendors, a food vendor or, you know, I think we could give input on that if that's what everybody wants.
Counselor Born?
Steph, what do they do in other municipalities? Do they separate these bylaws or do they lump them all together?
It's kind of across the board. I mean, it's, 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 yeah, there's all kinds of different ways to do it. Um, and it just kind of depends on what I think your municipality is, is faced with at the time, as to the reason why you're creating a bylaw. Um, it depends what your issue of that municipality has with whatever issue is trying to be addressed with and creating a bylaw. Which typically how bylaws are created, they're addressed, they had, they're, the need to address an issue. Um, so the initial direction from council was food and now I feel like that's switched. So we just need, we just need to know. We can certainly draft two or we can have one.
Counselor Matheson LaForte?
I, I kind of agree with Counselor Born on this one. I think we start with what we have and we can go back if we need to, two years from now or whenever to adjust it. That's my opinion anyway. Thank you.
Anyone else? So my understanding, they want the event permit and the daily permit changed.
I'm the, uh, math is not my strong suit, but I think we're going to have to, um, look at the numbers for that to make it make sense to give a seasonal versus a daily if we change those numbers. But we can certainly look at the numbers on that and, uh,
And another one was the fine. Uh, Deputy Warden said the fine should be maybe $300 per offense.
I thought she said five hundred.
Five. So that, that needs to be changed. And.
And are we including?
Yes.
Fish and meat?
That's what I want. So is it the wishes that of council to include the meat and fish, uh, trucks to have, uh, one of these permits too? No. Thank you.
Yeah. Counselor Matheson first.
Um, I hate to say it, but I'd kind of like to see what, again, to look at how our neighboring counties have handled that, just because where we border them when it comes to making those decisions. No, but, uh, sorry.
Donovan?
I, I don't want to over-regulate things.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Uh, I want to make it easier for people to, to carry out their business.
Yeah.
Point though, if there is fish and meat coming in here, I would expect we would want them to have uh, valid food safety certification. Uh, I would hope, I would want them to, I'd want to know that we're selling safe, safe products.
Oh, no, absolutely. I mean, there's, yeah, I, I agree a hundred percent. Um, I just want, whatever, whatever is the decision that's made, I just want it to be fair across the board. So that you don't have one group saying, well, how come they don't have to do it and we do? And how come they get away with this and we can't? It has to be fair across the board, everybody.
Is where you guys.
Cross the border.
Deputy Warden?
Cross the border, what is, like with another municipalities? No. What you mean in the cross border? Oh, okay. Yeah, no, and it's fair what you say about the safety is we're talking about, uh, I think will be in, for me in, but maybe the meat and the fish is seasonal as well. So they just can apply for a seasonal permit because they come in every, every once a week. So it's, it's a seasonal permit for if they can go here or north, right? It's, it's just a seasonal permit for Victoria County. If you want to, uh, sell your fish or your meat, uh, that way they have to have all these application requirements for sure.
My thoughts exactly. I think the meat and fish trucks should be included because they are a food.
I think edible is, is fair game.
Okay. Um, you got clear as mud?
I'll need a motion on what the next.
But you're clear as mud is so far?
Oh, I'm very clear. Yep.
Okay, can I get a motion, uh, to take back, uh, for Steph to take this back and, uh, come up with the, uh, formal one?
Before I make.
Okay, go ahead.
Before I make, uh, well, we made the motion just to clarify, this is going to a first reading and the public.
Thank you. That's what I was going to ask as well.
And then the public can, uh, give her opinions and go back. So it's just a beginning for something. It's not like it's going to be this.
Okay. So you want to make a motion?
I make the motions to take the, all the recommendations to SF and make, uh, for the first reading.
Okay, it's moved by the Deputy Warden. Can I get a seconder? Second by Counselor Matheson LaForte. All in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. Um, washroom program and funding, uh, model is that.
Yeah, oh, so that's me.
Oh, that you.
That's me as well. Yep. Okay, so, uh, on direction of Counselor Born, uh, we came up with what we think could be a good washroom program and funding model. This is for washrooms that we do not partner with at this point. Um, it is something that we thought could help with the costs of washrooms. We know that there's a lot of visitors around. We know that there's excessive use at, um, places all around the county. Uh, so thought that, um, this may be something to help. We have a little bit of money in our budget, uh, that we've put aside for this. So wondering what anyone has to think about the, the funding model that we sent out to you?
Any questions, comments on Counselor Born?
The only question or comment, and it's not a big deal, but I thought if there was any consideration, um, for a partial advance payment, if we found out that some businesses were having some hardships upfront instead of waiting to the year end to be receiving funding. But besides that, I thought it looked really good. And that's just a, a more of a comment or.
For you guys, I think, um, ideally we, uh, yeah, the, uh, the whole cons, the concept of this, um, technically we're not, we, we can't fund businesses. Um, so I, I would hate to see us doing that up, upfront. Um, but not my, not my decision. This, my thought is no. Um, yeah, my thought is no.
And are these just for, uh, brick and mortar or could a business apply if they put porta potties on their property?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's eligible costs would be in relation to, um, any type of washroom that they, that they are funding for the public. Yeah.
Deputy Ward?
Yeah, just for the renewable process, um, participate in May a reply annually, subject to program review and variable funds. My question is, eh, because this is the first safe, you know, first, first come, first served. Um, for the next year, for example, and they will give you more, uh, opportunity to the people didn't get it. Or you, it's going to be like a, if they, I don't know, Johnny's applying one year and Johnny apply every year. So.
Yeah, I would think that it would come from the short report that we get at the end of it outlining the use. I would think it would go we'll have to see, this is a pilot project. So, um, I mean, it's a small amount of money. Ideally, it's going to all the different, um, districts. But it's only on who's going to take advantage of it first. Um, and who's quick enough as a first, first come, first served.
Everybody.
Pilot project.
Okay. Thanks.
Counselor Born? Sorry, just had one more question. When it comes to things like porta potties, how would they track the amount of people? I think that's part of the requirements is the number of users. So I'm just wondering how would we capture that?
I think it goes in the.
Right, compared to coming into a store.
Yeah, I would say that they, if they have costs for porta potties, it's probably because there's a need for them. I can't see anybody paying for a porta potty if they don't need it. Um, and it could just be that their septic system isn't able to, um, support it, which makes sense. Um, and we have ways of tracking, we, we hear from Destination K Breton of all the visitors. We know that there's a, we know there's a need. So if it's porta potty that is funded, we take them, I guess, at their word on that.
It may be hard to track, but they'll do their best to.
Yeah.
Try to collect that information.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
Deputy Warden?
Uh, just for, how much is going to be the funding?
I believe it's $8,000 that we put aside.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's eight.
Eight?
Was it 20?
Okay.
For this, for the pilot project. Usually I'm remembering those numbers, but not today.
It's 20 individual businesses that could apply.
Or it could be one that does it 20 times.
Yes.
First come, first served.
Counselors, what is your thoughts on, on this? Like, do you want to go ahead with this? Need a motion? Or do you want tweaking or? Oh, you guys are quiet today.
Do you have, it's a pilot project?
Yeah.
Because we need to know if this going for next year.
Yeah, the motion I believe had that it was a pilot project. So we were asked to come forward with a, some type of model to use for this year.
Counselor Matheson LaForte?
My, my only, my first instinct was just that a thousand dollars or 50% of eligible cost almost seemed, uh, just a tad low. Only based on the feedback I'm getting from people that have had to have their septic systems pumped out lately, that price is going through the roof. It can be upwards of $700 each time. As long as these businesses getting into that, you know, under, really understand what kind of a drain it could be on their business if suddenly 200 people a day are showing up. And I know it's, I mean, there are legally binding aspects to an MOU, but that was my thing. I just thought, ooh, a thousand, that's kind of low. That, that's why we don't really want to get into the washroom business. But, uh, here we are, talking about it again. Um, so I need to take direction from you guys, you council, Counselor Born?
Make a motion to approve the washroom program and funding model presented.
Motion on the table. Do I have a seconder? Second by Counselor Donovan. Is there a discussion?
Just to make sure it's a pilot project, right?
Pardon?
With a pilot, it's a pilot.
Yes, pilot project.
In the motion.
It is a pilot project in the motion. Okay. All in favor? Hence, motion is carried. Okay. Council and committee of the whole dates and times. I sent out an email to all counselors and I sent the results off to Steph and you're going to.
Uh, yeah, it would just need to be a public discussion on, on what the wishes of council are for their, um, council, regular council meeting dates and times and committee of the whole sessions.
Was, uh, discussed to be every second and last Monday? Was uh the discussed to be every second and last Monday of the month? That's what was the consensus was. Um, time, ten AM. That's consensus. If it's a holiday on that Monday, it would be changed to the Tuesday. Um, no, we're not changing dates because we'll have speakers. Um, what else?
Sorry, so once the dates are set, the dates are set. Um, if a councillor can't make it, are you suggesting that they send their regret?
Yeah.
Because the date won't be changed?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that councillor Deputy Ward McLeod?
Uh, just um eh you're going to set the dates and how far are you going to set them?
I know it was suggested, pardon me, I know it was suggested two years. I think one year is he suffice right now. Um, and obviously that can be reviewed, but I think for for the sake of planning, I think a year is uh suffice to to for planning purposes. Um, I think going two years out might be a little bit too much for right now, especially if council wishes uh or if council decides that that those times aren't working and then we've got to backtrack and take two years worth off.
Yes, what it was one year. Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Can I know? And for example, you're going to bring you're going to send us one month, two months, three months?
I'll set them for the year. So, yeah, tomorrow probably you'll all be uh bombarded with uh a thousand calendar invites. Um, and just to be clear, committee of the whole is going to be first, the the second Tuesday and regular council will be the last second Tuesday, the second Monday, and then our regular council will be the two weeks later. Right? Good, that's what we discussed.
Yeah, yeah. So what happens if we don't have a quorum? We don't have a quorum if that happens? If you're allowed to move at least a day or it's just?
I if you don't have a quorum for that council date, then there's no council.
And we can escape two weeks?
Yeah. Weeks notice that you're not attending?
No, 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 like that guy is no, for example, Monday is no quorum. The next council meeting will be until you until when?
Whatever the next schedule for your council meeting is, yeah. And so I I mean, if that's the direction of council, if you've decided that the date will not be changed, then if you don't have a quorum, then that council session is
Quit asking.
Won't go forward.
Yeah, uh because it's very like a black and white, so I just want to make sure it is going to be that way.
Well, with presenters too, it's it's hard to get another date and another date and so so this is we're starting off the year like this. And see how it works for the next twelve months, and if we have to change, we'll have to change. But we should know in advance that, I mean, we're gonna have the dates for the next twelve months and we should schedule things accordingly to our council meetings.
Yeah, and if not, you just if something comes up, you send your regrets.
Okay.
Being noted, uh councillors can't miss more than three uh council sessions in a row.
In a row. Okay. You don't need that in a motion?
It's a direction of council for staff.
Can I get that eh a motion to accept that calendar year of the dates? It's moved by councillor Donovan, second by councillor Matheson the fourth. All in favor? Motion carried. Or hey, go for district highlights. We'll start with councillor Hennick.
Thank you, Warden. Um, been a busy summer so far in District Eight. Uh, I attended the annual Crab Fest. Lots of people were enjoying the crab dinner and or ham dinner. Uh, a special thank you to the Bay Saint Lawrence uh Fire Department for all their wonderful volunteers for uh the great dinner that they put on. Um, and to the fishing derby was also a great success with Dawson Woody taking home the top prize of five hundred dollars, prize for the largest fish. Can do, congrats to him. Um, I also attended the boat parade. Um, it was nice to see all the boats decorated up in the evening and doing their loop around the harbor. It was very nice. Uh, many thanks to the Bay Saint Lawrence Community Center because they also had a family fun day that uh was enjoyed by all uh families earlier in that day. Um, I received lots of messages about uh campers on Dingwall Beach. Uh, I have messaged and called the RCMP and DNR several times, but it still continues. Um, I even requested more um do not feed wildlife also on the beach because they're feeding foxes and we all know what happened to the poor foxes that were at the ferry, so I'm encouraging even residents not to to be feeding the wildlife there. Um, so hopefully, um we'll get some more movement with more RCMP and DNR uh rotations on the camping uh on the beach. Um, I also received word from DNR that they are going to be hopefully putting a proper stairs or ramp at the Cabot Slade in Provincial Park. Um, they're just waiting for approval from Bell Lion. Uh, where the cable there that's connected to Newfoundland, they wanna make sure that everything is okay before they actually put in a new uh steps there, which is great. Lots of residents have been sending their their complaints, so which is great that finally something is being moved on it. As for now, there's just a wooded walkway with shingles on it, so it's not very appropriate because it is a little bit of a steep to climb down and to come back up. Um, we've been, it's been pretty busy, like I said, with tourism. Um, with reports from the the North Highlands Community Museum seeing large amounts of tourists using the county supplied washrooms. Um, they keep track of people that come in and know their doors for their funding also, so um one day alone, there was two hundred and forty-six that entered the building, and that's not with the tourists that came in through the back of the building, so um they're really being used with uh with everything else. I think with the parks being closed, I really think tourists are thinking too that the washrooms are closed, so they're getting lots of traffic in through that way. Um, I just wanted to let the people know that uh inquired about getting streetlights put up up to ongoing with Nova Scotia Power. Um, they're backlogged and they will let us know when they will be resuming uh their work on streetlights. Um, I also would like to um ask the staff for cost analysis on uh the water line going up to Cape North. I had several requests from residents and business owners about uh looking into it about the water line because as the wells are are really going dry up between Courtney Road and up to Cape North Hill. So would I have to make a motion to do that?
No, there's no motion. It's just a request.
A request. All right. Um, but other than that.
That a few years ago, I'll send you that information too.
Just see if there's gonna be any, you know, if costs could have gone up or or whatnot.
Yeah.
That would be great. Um, and that's about all for District Eight. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hennick. Councillor Donovan?
Uh, it's been, it's been very warm and very dry. Uh, first thing I wanna do is thank the local residents and all of the visitors coming into coming into the Inghamish area in particular for not walking on the trails and not going into the woods and making sure that what we have there is protected from wildfires. There are people who would love to go hiking, I'm sure. Uh, fortunately, the Inghamish Connected website and I believe the Victoria County, Victoria County Activities website have long lists of alternative ways to occupy your time. I've noticed that the beaches in the area are uh, they've been packed pretty much every day. Uh, we're all hoping for rain, I'm sure. At some point, it'll it'll arrive. Um, the IDS, uh Inghamish Development Society are continuing with their good work at uh Freshwater Cove. They have a floating dock there, kayak canoe rentals. Uh, they also had a uh program this summer where they offer swimming lessons for children, which went over really well. Uh, let me see. Of course, the restaurants are incredibly busy. And I do ask that people have patience when they go to the restaurants. If you're told that there is going to be a wait, they can only uh they can only serve it as fast as it can be cooked, so. And keep in mind that it's thirty-five degrees outside. It's probably forty-five in the kitchen. Uh, there are also several local establishments uh in the Inghamish area who not only offer fine food, but they offer fine local entertainment while you're eating that fine food. Uh, so you may wanna check out a few of those. They're usually posted on their Facebook uh Facebook pages when they do offer uh, they do offer entertainment. Uh, and there is now a uh beach volleyball court, which is located behind the Mary Barker Field, and I've noticed that it has been getting some some uses some of. So it's another another activity to occupy your time when the to get the salt water up. That's it for that's it for me.
Thank you, councillor Donovan. Councillor Patterson?
Uh, thank you, Warden. Uh, just uh following up on councillor Donovan's uh statement about wildfires and so on. Um, and people have been complying, I believe. There have been some complaints about uh you know, restriction of rights or whatever, but I heard an interesting argument. Actually, I read an article. Uh, you go for a walk in the woods and a fire breaks out, you could be trapped very easily. Uh, they have, fire departments have said, uh, I think in New Brunswick and other places, that if they don't get there within ten minutes, the fire is gone. It's so dry. It's unbelievably dry. So, you know, those things are are can happen very easily. Uh, just a couple of highlights from District Five. We have some paving on the south side. Um, it is so nice to drive on a freshly paved road. Uh, it's just a treat. Uh, it only goes to the county line, and I don't know what CBRM is doing with their side of it, but uh the Victoria part is Victoria County part is is just a pleasure to drive on now. Uh, we've also had some bush cutting. Uh, a private company, and I'm not sure if they're doing it for the uh power company or for the Department of Public Works. But i- if any of you have seen it, um, they leave stumps probably eight to ten feet high. They only cut off the top of the trees. I I don't know if that's standard practice or I I assume it is or whatever. Now, someone did tell me they may come along later on and and cut them down. Uh, but it does look very odd right now. But anyway, again, uh thankful for that. Uh, we also have uh for the first time in a long time, the uh introduction of a new um business establishment, a new store. If you uh cross the Seal Island Bridge and you notice the just before the storage units, there's some storage units put there in the last year or so. Uh, you'll see a building being constructed, and I hear it's gonna be a coffee shop, a small hardware store, and maybe even some office space. So uh that's, people are looking forward to that because right now, uh, anyone from uh willagey has to drive to the door to uh get, you know, order milk or a loaf of bread or whatever. Um, I've had some conversations about the municipal grants. And and correct me if I'm wrong, but thi- this is the first year we've given partial amounts. Uh, I think down to twenty-five percent, some of them. Is that correct? The first year we've done that?
Well, you you guys have in the past made all kinds of different random decisions, so I remember there was one year that council did a ten percent across the board. So, no, it's not the first year that there was partial grants, but it was the first year of scoring and using a rubric. Correct?
Thank you. I wasn't sure. Uh, but anyway, the the uh conversation centered around uh twenty-five percent, even fifty percent is uh they don't feel as adequate to uh carry out the projects they had uh anticipated or or applied for. So I don't know if we can review that. Uh, maybe we can look at the ones that were were restricted in the amount of funds they got uh from doing what they wanted to do. So and uh maybe look at that for next year.
Uh, we'll bring up the grant um process again next year coming into council because you guys decided on the rubric and on the scoring, and then staff took it upon themselves. We took, we did a a group scoring. We thoroughly looked through all of the applications. We brought it forward and then council made the final decision.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, I guess it comes down to um I think they were, the organizations were grateful for what they got. But then again, uh it wasn't enough to allow them to carry out the full project they were proposing. So you said, man, we can look at that. And then finally, I uh have the uh K Breton Bible Camp uh on my list, and there's some gentlemen here, I think are gonna ask some questions during the question period, Warden. So we'll leave that until uh the question period at the end of the meeting. Thank you.
Patterson, councillor Born?
Deputy Ward. On August eighth, I attended a celebration of life for retired deputy chief Sheldon Ferguson, representing both District Four and Victoria County. It was a touching service with an honor guard that truly reflected his commitment to the community. I'd like to request that we send two letters of condolence, one to his wife Cindy and family, and one to the North Shore and District Volunteer Fire Department.
There's a motion on the table. Do I have a second or? I can write councillor Donovan. Discussion or all in favor? Motion's carried.
I recently stopped into Glenborn Cider in Glentosh, an amazing local business built on vision, hard work, and community spirit. If you get a chance, I really encourage you to drop by and also follow them on Facebook um under Glenborn Cider to keep up with their journey. It's a it's a great addition to our community. They've done an amazing job. I've also asked them to, if they wanted to come to council and do a little presentation in the future, so we'll see what happens there. I'd also like to welcome two new businesses in the district. We have new ownership at the Lobster Galley. I recommend anyone stopping by to check out the new updated menu. And Hinterglass Art Studio and Gallery that has opened up in Skurdoo along the Cabot Trail, a great addition to our local arts scene. Um, I do wanna chat quickly about, I received several calls over the past month from residents about speeding, distracted driving, and a very troubling incident where a local was repeatedly cut off by a truck. It was reported to the RCMP and it was an extremely dangerous situation. I'd like to make a motion that we request a meeting with the RCMP to discuss these ongoing safety concerns and how we can work together on the solution.
Oh, we have the, our head staff sergeant is coming in September, um so we can discuss that then. Instead. Council or a separate meeting? He he comes Okay. Regular council. Okay, great. So do you wanna take that motion off the table?
No, no, yes, we'll take that off. That's great. Thank you. And then I hope this is okay. Um, to announce, I'm sure it is, uh, we did receive an email from Stephen Kerr, who's a local residence, and he's from the uh Bedore Archers Association. And Sam Mian, who is a local resident in Victoria County, just came back with three gold medals from the Canadian Outdoor Archery Championship. So I just wanted to acknowledge that great accomplishment for our local resident. Thank you. That's it from my district. Councillor Born, Deputy Warden?
Thank you, Warden. Um, I have a few of them. Um, the first at all, uh after I receiving feedback from some councillors, uh I would like to ask staff to some recommendations to proceed for the face B for the trails. Uh, it's going to include some community engagement uh before I can send the motion to the province of approval access. So I would like to make a if the if staff can give us some recommendations for the face three for the tri project. I don't know, I motion. Yeah, yeah. And I have um too much to do. Um, I have two motions. So uh councillor Perla McLeod, uh move to. I have two motions. So, uh, I'm Councillor Perla MacLeod, uh, move to request a letter be sent to Prime, Prime Minister Tim Houston, asking him to send correspondence to the federal government, the Honourable Buckley Bellinger, indicating his personal and political support for a new community centre to be constructed in Victoria County. This is after, um, we had, um, the Honourable, uh, Bellinger, uh, he came to Victoria County to check out the, uh, the sixth centre. So he was asking, uh, if the province and the federal they were talking. And then pivot is say no, so we just went to, they have started the conversation together. So it's a piece, uh, good, it's a special key there for our funding.
Okay, there's a motion on the table. Do I have a second? Second by Councillor Matheson of Ford. Uh, all in favor? Motion's carried.
Thank you. And my second is, uh, Councillor MacLeod, uh, make a motion to recognise Sandy and Annie Campbell for providing five hundred thousand dollars to the Victoria Highland Community Centre Legacy Fund, which will support the long-term operational sustainability of the new facility.
A motion on the table. Can I get a second there, please? Second by Councillor Donovan.
Thank you.
All in favor? Discussion. The five hundred thousand for?
Yeah, Sandy and Annie Campbell, they, they, five hundred thousand dollars for the funding, uh, legacy fund. So I just want to make a motion for, just to recognise.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor? Motion's carried.
I have is, uh, just for a knowledge for District Two in Big Bedek. Um, we had a bridge in Peters Brook is closed right now, but I received a note, uh, it's going to be, um, delayed. Unfortunately, the bridge work isn't whole until they obtain the required permits and develop a fire safety plan to allow it to work to continue safely. So it was going to be only for two weeks, so we, now we have to hold it until they can start working. And the last one is just to, to know that Iskerean Falls is closed apart, and I appreciate it and thank you for respect the, the van in that area. And that's it. Thank you, Warden.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. Councillor Matheson of Ford.
Thank you, Warden. So, as Councillor Bourne knows, when you have a ferry in your district, there's a lot of different issues regarding the ferry and its operation or its lack thereof. So after months of concern being raised about the structure of the ferry signage, for anybody who's not familiar, if you see the ones in English Town, the ferry signs that tell you when it's not working are pretty high up in the air. They're all inclusive, they're all together. Well, the ones that they recently installed in this last year, um, on the Trans-Canada Highway and like Hogamond, different areas, they're basically down in the shrubs. So now that the greenery has like grown, you can't even see the sign that says when light's flashing. So people see ferry not operating and freak out. So a lot of tourists in the area especially, they're taking portage road. So the acting, um, the current acting captain in charge, David Grant, he has reached out and he said that they've acknowledged the concerns, and they're working on a solution, which I'm grateful for. Regarding activities, the annual festival along the shores of Washebuck, they had another successful ten days of jam-packed activities. They started August first with their annual family square dance, and they ended August tenth, with a meet and greet that celebrated the finale, and it was jam-packed everything for an entire ten days. So kudos to the, and Victoria County, we did give them five hundred dollars to support that as well. Um, in Iona, the sixty-fourth, uh, Highland Village Day concert on August second saw record attendance numbers. A big thank you goes out to the performers, musicians, volunteers, but I'd like to throw a thank you out to the tireless employees who work behind the scenes annually to make Highland Village what it is the other three hundred and sixty-four days of the year. Because I don't know if they're ever given the recognition that they deserve. The Port of Iona held their kite flying festival August third, which involved constructing and flying kites, along with the barbecue, a visit from the mobile library in Bedek, as well as music. And, um, an exciting upcoming event is the twenty-twenty-five MiGMA Summer Games in Wadmakuuk. The games take place from August fifteenth to August twenty-fourth, and they have so many activities. They range from arm wrestling to washer toss and everything else in between. And to get the most up-to-date schedule for that, because it, it, there are just changes along the way, I would advise people going to, all spelled as one, um, migmasummergames.ca. That's the best place you're going to get the most informed information on what's happening at the Summer Games. But I'd also like to throw in that I didn't write, yes, freshly paved roads are really nice. I, I wish they hadn't started right in front of my house because it looked like I was like getting special treatment, but thankfully they extended beyond. But yes, they're really lovely and, um, yeah, thank you for that. So that will be the end of my district highlights. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I just make a comment?
Go ahead.
Councillor Matheson reports, uh, statement about the signs, and it, it dawned on me that even that wind flashing is visible, it's smaller. So the first thing you see is ferry not operating. You know, and I'm thinking, tourists especially are going to read that part and, you know, say, there is not operating. So I, I don't know if they could change the wording altogether. I, I, I know your point about the bottom part, where that is, you can't even see it because the bushes are so high. But I, I think the sign itself needs some kind of restructuring.
Yeah, I, if they could even raise ours up, it would help. Right now, i- it's kind of a patchwork quilt because they had one sign and they threw the little bottom message on and, but they're, they're actually being great and, you know, willing to work with us on that, so. At least they're taking suggestions.
Thank you. Okay, District Seven. Uh, as everybody knows, it's been a crazy, busy, hot summer. Uh, our beaches, our restaurants and campgrounds, and especially our roads. So I just want to tell everybody to take a minute to please slow down, be patient, and be cautious on our roads. We do have some crazy incidents, people stopping to take pictures and bicyclists and stuff like that. I had the pleasure to be at the Bold Centre with the Premier, with Premier Houston, M L A Timmins, Councillors Bourne and Kerr. And with the recent announcement from our, uh, premier about the closures of the hiking trails in all wooded areas because of extreme, uh, heat and dryness, I urge that everyone, please, please obey. One small mistake could be devastating for our communities. Um, although, also, there is a, now there's a ban on fireworks too, so please. And I know in the Inghgash area that, uh, some families have fireworks almost every night, so, so far, they haven't been doing it, so it's been wonderful. Uh, I'd like to take this opportunity to remind all residents of, uh, of the county that are on our municipal water. I'm just going to read the, the county blurb that we put out, uh, conserve water. Supply in Victoria County, let's all band together to do our part to save the forest by limiting our water use in case we need those resources soon. With the dry and hot weather and no rain in the forecast, many of us are concerned about water levels in Victoria County. Together, we can do our part for our community this summer by not watering lawns, washing vehicles, or filling pools. This will help conserve our water supply for essential needs and for the emergency response services that we rely on. And one more thing that I'd like to pass on, regrets for Councillor Kerr, I should have done that at the beginning, he's not here today. Um, and that's it for District Seven. Oh, next we have a motion from Councillor Matheson of Ford.
Thank you, Warden. I just wanted to say thank you again to the representatives from basic income Nova Scotia. And I also wanted to say thank you for Councillor Bourne for suggesting that I bring them here. Because when I had the idea of, um, um, putting forth these motions, you know, it was brought up, do you have anybody who might, you know, is anybody coming to represent and back this and show some information? And I, I actually appreciate the suggestion immensely because I am very grateful for them coming today, so. The, the title of what I'm putting out there is basically, it's, it has to do with the municipality of the County of Victoria in support of a guaranteed basic income. I don't really want to have to read through most of what I wrote. It's reiterating what they said. But I'll just start with a few things. Income insecurity is a growing concern across Canada and within Victoria County, as you saw from the stats. It's affecting residents' access to essential needs, such as housing, food, transportation, and healthcare. In Victoria County, we get the benefit of, um, hiding some, it's not a benefit, but it, we, our poverty gets hidden a lot. We don't have urban areas where we get to see everyone who are homeless or unhoused, but it's still there and you see the stats when you look at the evidence, it's there. And rural communities like those in Victoria County, we face unique challenges. Not every one of our districts is the same, um, but we all usually, we're all infected by seasonal employment, limited access to social services, and again, not every district, but there's some of the districts do deal with outmigration. There's more young people leaving than coming in, but that, again, that doesn't apply to every area of Victoria County, but it definitely applies to mine. And it has for decades. A basic income would provide a regular predictable and unconditional income to individuals. This has to do with dignity, not just surviving. It has to do with dignity. If we look at pilot programs in Ontario and other jurisdictions, they've demonstrated that basic income can improve mental and physical health, reduce poverty. Municipalities, including those in rural Nova Scotia, are bearing the costs of this poverty. We currently don't even have an open emergency department. I, what percentages of people who were going to those departments are we're putting a strain on the system because of poverty, because of mental health issues, because of the health issues that arise from poverty. Uh, the COVID pandemic demonstrated the value of direct income supports. I mean, SERB alone highlighted the gaps in existing safety net. The second, that first paycheck was gone for most people. They were struggling. And as the presenters mentioned, um, studies have shown that the combination of Canada's OAS, Old Age Security, and Guaranteed Income Supplement have reduced food insecurity, lowered healthcare utilization, and improved overall health for individuals sixty-five and over, but now we have to try to do something about that fifteen to It's pretty sad. If I, I never thought I'd be sitting here waiting until I hit sixty-five to know that I might possibly not be as insecure when it comes to money. I never thought that would be something I'd see in Canada. Um, and as it was mentioned, guaranteed basic income would work alongside existing public services, and it would help streamline and simplify income supports across all levels of government. So I have two motions. I, I originally had one motion, but now I have two based on input and advice. So the first motion I put forth is that the council of the municipality of the County of Victoria requests the Government of Canada to implement a national guaranteed basic income program to ensure income security and dignity for all Canadians.
You have a motion on the table. Do I have a second? Second by Deputy Warden. All in favor? Yeah, but I have to get it passed before. Okay, just, yeah, we can have a discussion. A discussion. Anybody want to discuss? Get a motion, right? We need to pass it before we can discuss it. Yeah, second. Oh, yeah, we have second. We got the second, now we discuss it. Yeah, sorry. I had a, hey, yeah. We, we, rewind. We have a second there. Now we have a discussion. Sorry, I had a little brain freeze there. Any, anyone have any discussion? Questions? The motion was to, for the
Yeah, it's just requesting, it's basically on behalf of Victoria County, writing a letter to request that the Government of Canada implement. And that's part one. Basically, we're advocating on behalf of it.
Okay, now, okay. All in favor? If you call for a question, then you have to, so you call for discussion? Are you okay with everything now?
I want a good question.
Discussion. It's got to be in the discussion. It can't be in, in a question because when you call for a question, it comes, anyways, it's in the, the discussion. Go ahead. Councillor Bourne. Okay, Councillor Bourne is going first. Okay, so, um, I'm just wondering if it could be reworded slightly, um, because it's at the Council of Municipality of County of Victoria requests the Government of Canada to implement a national guarantee. And I know there was a rewording, I think, on the website of a, of a motion that would fit to tie the present, the presentation into it, but I'm not quite sure.
Well, what would you reckon, um, what would you recommend for rewording?
I could look at the web. Yeah, so, so I, I just think it maybe, I don't know if it's enough or to request, are we, the Council of Municipality of the County of Victoria requests the government. So we're, we're sending a letter to support. Yes, okay. Thank you.
Councillor Donovan?
I'm going to play devil's advocate here. My concern is, my concern is what could happen uh, based on what I actually saw happen during COVID when the C R B was passed out. At that time, it seemed to be an incentive to keep people home, not working. Uh, my fear is that this could end up the same.
Matheson of Ford?
That, that is a valid concern. Uh, there are several studies that have shown it's the opposite that does happen. There are several studies where they had like the pilot program in Ontario, and they had one, I believe, in Manitoba. And it actually increases employment levels because it gives people accessibility to, um, things like transportation and even things like childcare. So it actually can increase the employment levels according to the pilot programs that have happened in other countries and in different areas of Canada.
What I, what I did see personally was that it actually, uh, in some cases, uh, develops into a black market workforce who collect, I know during COVID, they collected the C R B payments. Uh, and there were folks that collected those, not working, didn't, weren't comfortable in the COVID environment to be working outdoors or out in the public. Went off their regular jobs onto the C R B program and then worked under the table tax-free.
I respect that opinion. I can't, I can bring up the SERB, but I can't defend it or justify it either because number one, I was not in this country. Number two, I did see the things that happened in the news. But, um, the SERB, the SERB, it, I'm using the example of the SERB to show that it highlighted gaps. I am not at all defending how the SERB program was run at all. Because there were issues that I witnessed from the outside looking in with the SERB program, so I, there were definitely issues with that program itself. Yes.
I guess maybe what I'm thinking is, um, the existing social programs that are there, could they be, could they be increased or could they be looked at to make up for that shortfall? Without having a guaranteed, a guaranteed salary or guaranteed pay?
Again, I'm not an expert, as we have, they are over there, the ones who are the real experts.
But it's not working. It's not working. And it's kind of like, I'm gonna use an analogy that you made earlier. Sometimes it's easier to tear down the building and build a new one than it is to repair the old structure. It would cost more, because that's a perfect analogy with some of these systems. It, and again, I can't talk, based, I'm not an expert, but from what I've studied, it would be easier to have a new system than to try to repair the old one, basically. Let's knock down that building and build a new one, as you said earlier. It would be cheaper and more cost-effective. So I'm so glad you brought that up earlier, actually. Thank you.
Counselor Patterson, do you have a comment?
Thank you, Warden. With, with all due respect to my, my seatmate here, Counselor Donovan, I understand your statement about during COVID, but there was no incentive to gain employment, whereas this program, as was described, would give an incentive to do that. Also, I think we all know people, where there are two people working in a household. And by the time they pay mortgage or rent, gas for their vehicle, and buy groceries, there's very little, if anything, left at the end of the month. I mean, the price of groceries is just, I, I thought I was buying a whole cow one day when I looked at the price of a steak. You know, I don't know, if you have teenagers, I don't know how you can afford to feed them, because it's just through the loop. So I see this as kind of a base level that you establish. And as Counselor DeFord said, you know, maybe explore employment opportunities or whatever. And if you do gain employment, you would have that base level to rely on and then could increase from there. So, and as I said earlier, when the presenters were here, this idea, I think, was probably back in the 60s when it first surfaced. But maybe it's time to look at it in a new light. And, and as Counselor Donovan mentioned, maybe looking at the existing programs to see if they could dovetail with this or whatever. But I, I think it's worth the effort of contacting the federal government to show that we think it is worth exploring.
Okay, just to respond to what you said, there, I live in a house that I built myself. That's just over 500 square feet. There's four adults living there. Thankfully, it's mortgage-free, because I put in most of the labor myself and only $35,000 on the shell of the building I was given. There's three of us working. And I have to penny pinch like crazy, just to put money aside for a rainy day. That's four adults. Living in another country like I did before, the cost of living was so much lower that I was basically classed as upper-middle income there. I moved back to Canada and I'm just hovering above the poverty line. So that's four of us. I can't imagine if that's not even your option, to have your family living with you or to live with family.
Do you know? So Donovan?
After hearing Counselor Patterson's remarks, and after having already stepped in with an earlier analogy that I made myself. I guess what it comes down to is how the program would be administered. It has to be, it has to have oversight. It has to be regulated. It can't just be a free-for-all, which, and again, this is my opinion, the, the SERB program that the federal government put out was a free-for-all. In my opinion. It can't come out that way again.
But that mean, we're talking about a global pandemic that no one had planned versus poverty that's been around for a long time. So I'd hate, I can't, I don't know, it's like, it's not even like comparing oranges and apples. It's like comparing oranges and durian, which is the stinkiest fruit on the planet. But pandemic versus poverty, I, I see why the SERB was a bit of, you know, please, federal people, don't come, bit of a train wreck, you know. I, I get your reservations. I do appreciate that.
I just think it has to be administered correctly. It could be something that could work if it's administered correctly.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. We have a second or do we need motion right again for clarifications? No? Okay. So we have a motion on the floor. We have a second or we discussed. So all in favor? Motion is carried. Go ahead with your second one.
Okay, now, the second motion is that the Council of the Municipality of the County of Victoria requests that the Houston government establish an all-party committee to examine the effectiveness of implementing a basic income guarantee program. And that the findings of this committee should be formally communicated to the province with considered, consideration given to potential implementation in collaboration with the federal government. I can read that again if you'd need. So let me do it one more time. I move that the Council of the Municipality of the County of Victoria requests that the Houston government establish an all-party committee to examine the effectiveness of implementing a basic income guarantee program. And that the findings of that committee should be formally communicated to the province with consideration given to the potential implementation in collaboration with the federal government.
We have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second or? Oh. Second by Counselor Donovan? Do we have a discussion? Counselor Bourne?
Recommendation that we would consider the provincial government just to make the document relevant for years to come and not pertaining to a particular...
Yes, I agree. So we can say, I can change it right now and say, I move that the Council of Municipality of County of Victoria requests that the provincial government establish, should I, do I take that back or just reword it? Just reword it. Okay, I can replace, we'll place in Houston with provincial government.
And then just a suggestion. And the findings of the committee should be formally communicated to the province. I would probably include the municipalities in that as well, so we get documentation back.
Province and municipalities.
Thank you. Thank you for the suggestion, Counselor. Counselor, you want to read that again then for us?
Absolutely. So I move that the Council of the Municipality of the County of Victoria requests that the provincial government establish an all-party committee to examine the effectiveness of implementing a basic income guarantee program. And that the findings of this committee should be formally communicated to the province as well as municipalities, which considerate, with consideration given to potential implementation in collaboration with the federal government.
Counselor Donovan, you still want to second the motion? Okay. So we have a motion. We have a second or all in favor? Motion is carried.
Okay, we have the CAO committee reports. Okay. Yeah, great. So just a few things from happening in different departments around the county. So our property tax bills went out early this year and the deadline was August 1st. We've been very busy processing payments downstairs. They're continuing to roll in past the deadline. Interest will be run on September 1st for anyone who is unpaid. An update on our tender tax sale. So our August 26th tax sale is going to be by tender. So packages have to come in. There's six properties remaining on that, and that is August 26th as a deadline.
Can I ask why it's by tender this time?
It's just a process that we started a few years ago. And...
By auction and then tender?
Yep. It's just a, it's just a different approach. There's no real... Yeah, there's no real reason to it. It's just, I, I don't think so. It could be that, yeah, I don't know the reason behind it. I don't, I don't wanna, I don't wanna...
Okay.
Notice has gone out on our last water bills indicating, actually on our property tax bill, indicating that a W should be added to the beginning of your water account bills when paying online payments, starting your next bill.
So next bill.
Yes, so...
I just, wait, that went...
No, please put a W on your, on your account when you're paying it, because it will be directed to your tax bill if not onto your water bill. We need the W. Please do it. In our communications department, our newsletter went out last week. Hopefully, everyone has received it by now. There was also a one-pager in relation to the wastewater treatment plant information that was sent at the same time to those in the Inghgash area. In our public works department, EXP has sent in their proposal for upgrades for Leachate wells. We have a price on that. We also received one bid on our waste collection truck tender. It's come in quite pricier than what we had budgeted on. This is a trend that is happening. It's going to continue happening. I don't see the prices going down. Delivery is still a year away on this. Wondering if, I guess, any council's approval to go forward with this, even though it is quite over our budgeted amount.
Excuse me, I just question there, where does it come from?
These are specialized, we order them through, well, the tender came in. I believe that it was a Bridgewater company that sent in the tender. The trucks are manufactured.
Texas, I think.
I don't know. I'm not sure. Do you order through a Nova Scotia company?
Tariffs have anything to do with this?
No, tariffs are going to add onto these prices.
That's what I mean, yeah.
This is, this is prior to that.
Yeah, that's right. So it could be considerably higher again.
Yeah. My recommendation is that we go forward with this, with this price, because it's not going to get any cheaper as long as we're doing this. Service, we're gonna need these.
So we need a motion for you to, do I have a motion to? Moved by Counselor Henick to go forward with this waste collection truck tender? Do I have a second or? Second by Counselor Bourne. Discussion. All in favor? Motion's carried.
Thank you. Our municipal innovation fund, as, as we know, we received funding for this project. We've sent a tender out. It closes August 15th. To date, two consulting firms have expressed interest on it, which is great. We'll have more information at our next council session. We also have a surplus assets tender out right now. Please check our website. It closes August 15th. We've also received facilities agreements from Circular Materials, which is the EPR program. It's been sent to legal for review at this time. I'm glad that counselors have brought this up, but we are also keeping a close eye on our Neils Harbor surface water supply, and if necessary, will implement water conservation measures down there. But as of right now, knock on wood, things are good. We are just encouraging everyone to smartly conserve water for all different kinds of reasons at this time. In our tourism department, so there was a report and recommendations expected this fall on our signage and wavefinding strategy that we had worked with a consulting group on gathering information and feedback. Also, in our sustainable tourism growth initiative, we've received six applications in the final round, and the successful applicants will be notified later on in the week, this week. Work also continues in this department on planning full community, full community engagement process in preparation for the planning of the 100th anniversary of the completion of the road named the Cabot Trail, as Destination Cape Breton had also brought up. And also, work continues on curating and posting events happening within Victoria County. As everyone knows, our website is our main go-to, along with our Engage website. So please keep checking that for anything that we have. If we know about it, we're gonna put it on there. In our trails department, the Big Hill Road project is almost complete now, but it's now on hold, of course, due to the woods ban. And we're also looking for a work permit to continue working on that section at this time. As we all know, we're not allowed in the woods. In our community development department, so we've been assisting IDS, Inghgash Development Society, on the Freshwater Cove Committee to facilitate community engagement, site growth, and improvement plans, including the placement of our C can washroom at this location. Work is underway to finalize the plans for this, and we hope that it's gonna be up and running by the spring of 2026. So that should help, also help with some of the bathroom issues that we know we're experiencing around, around the county. Our summer students have been very busy this year. They've been visiting community centers and locations. And they're preparing a community asset, community center asset inventory, which has a lens on accessibility, diversity, and inclusion. So that's gonna help with our idea plan. So in, as well as doing lots of fun stuff around the county. A couple of other things, I just keep you up to date. We did have another meeting with Milebrook Developers and Eastern District Planning. We're reaching out for quotes to have... I think it's me, it's not the mic. We're reaching out for quotes to have the road brought up to provincial standards and to pave the remainder of the section there. So we're still working on that. And that one was brought up. Counselor Bourne had some concerns over some graphics that had happened on a fetal alcohol syndrome campaign. I've reached out to the Nova Scotia Health Authority, who have directed us to those involved in the campaign. Some of the graphics that they used seem to be contra-productive to our tourism department. What was on the front page of the brochure was a picture of the Cabot Trail on the windy road, which doesn't seem to, which, which could... It does, yes. And so it doesn't seem to go along with the topic that is being discussed within a very important document. So I'm wondering if that is something that we should write a letter to NSHA expressing our concerns on. I'm sure Counselor Bourne, we've had a few discussions on this as well. So I'm wondering if that is something that council is interested in doing?
Go ahead, Counselor Bourne.
Just, just a little bit of background. What happened was, this was an internal document first sent through Basecamp to all of the Community Health Board members, and that's how it was brought to my attention. Since then, I have spoken to the FASD. They contacted me. And after a conversation to share my thoughts on stigmatizing an area, and like, they seen 100% the viewpoint behind it, 100%. However, that still doesn't fix that it was shared to begin with within Nova Scotia Health. So I completely agree with the letter to be sent to Nova Scotia Health on this matter. Thank you for bringing that up.
And I also have brought it up through discussions that we've had at the AMAN's board meetings that we have, and there was a presentation. So I brought it up there as well, and they in turn put us in contact with those contacts.
Do you want to make a motion to send a letter?
Yeah.
So do you want to bring that forward, Counselor?
Absolutely. I have a, will present a motion that we send a letter to Nova Scotia Health about the graphic that was shared through Basecamp?
Yeah, I think just in general, we should just remind them that some things can, as, as well-intentioned as they are, we are very heightened to things that could affect us in other areas.
Absolutely, and especially with the social determinants of health. I think it's really important, as the counselor mentioned, with the stigma that comes with that and know information that would come with it to support it or against it. So I will still bring that motion forward to send that letter to Nova Scotia Health.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second or second by Counselor?
Second by Council, Mattson and Fort? All in favor? Motion carried.
Thank you. Uh, I was also asked to contact the village of Bedeck here in regarding benches, garbage cans and dog poop locations. I received back from the village manager, so I just wanna read out, um, the response that we received in relation to that. So, for benches, the Village Public Works put the benches out to the usual locations around town. Garbage cans, uh, the Village Public Works put garbage bins on village properties and maintain those bins. Babta, St. Michael's Parish Hall and the Library Society also requested garbage bins and these organizations are taking care of the garbage in these bins. And the dog waste bins, uh, to their knowledge, the Works is still refilling the bags and clears those bins. So, that's the information that I had on that. Um, and then just last thing, uh, we had a meeting, um, Warden and I had a meeting with, uh, Minister of Justice Becky Druin to discuss the policing review and a summary was included on that in your council package, so, um, there, I know there's an announcement happening this week, but I don't expect that we're going to see much of a change, but it could be a change for the better where there is, um, communication between police departments and, uh, the RCMP that we have, uh, that services us at this time, so that's what I have.
Yeah, and also, we don't know if there's gonna be a slight increase in funding.
Yeah, a decrease or a decrease, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thank you for that. Any committee reports? Being none, any correspondence?
Uh, any correspondence that I've received or that we have sent out has been included in your council package.
Okay. Okay, before we adjourn? I said before. Everybody jumped on me. Before we, before we adjourn, uh, we'll take some, is there anybody that has questions on any of the presentations we had first? Can, yeah, uh, make sure your mic is turned on, can you state your name, please?
Hi, my name's Joe Cook. Thanks, uh, they're gonna talk about something else, but just a question about the basic income, uh, poverty reduction, that type of thing, just so everyone considers that poverty isn't just a lack of money, dignity isn't just about having money, um, there's more issues that go along with solving poverty than giving somebody $25,000 basic income. Well, I think that's a great thing, um, it's interesting to have a conversation where, uh, you guys had a conversation about business people and entrepreneurs trying to, uh, do food trucks, making that more difficult, seems like a little bit, or making it, you know, some hoops to jump through, people who are trying to provide their own income, um, give themselves dignity by creating their own business or job, uh, just, just to consider that these things are larger than, um, somebody having money. Poverty isn't just lack of funds, uh, dignity isn't just having money, having gainful employment, having the opportunity to work gives dignity. Uh, we see young people leaving Cape Breton not because they don't have $25,000, but because they wanna go find, uh, a job that, uh, gives them value in their life and worth, so, I just wanted to put that out there, poverty's a pretty big issue, be great if Victoria County solved it, do whatever you can, but, um, you know, we wanna keep young people here, I, I'm a father of five children, I have two teenagers and three kids under twelve and I have to feed them, um, and that takes a lot of money. I live on one salary, my wife works part-time, uh, and I feel like our family probably just maybe is above the poverty line on, um, paper, but there's other things that go along with value in life and, uh, so just, just wanna put that out there, uh, yeah, let's do what we can to make Victoria County a place that people wanna stay and come to and not just because they can afford groceries, you know, there's a guy selling good, healthy meat from a truck down the road, let's not make it more difficult for people to feed their families by making him jump through hoops. You know, we want, obviously we want money in Victoria County to stay in Victoria County, but we live in Cape Breton, this is all our island, so, you know, someone coming from down the road from another county shouldn't be punished, I don't think, when he's trying to make a living, give himself value-worth, um, get his family out of poverty maybe because he can raise a few calves and sell the meat, uh, or fish and sell the fish, or open a food truck and sell the food truck, so just, just to consider, while I appreciate the idea that, uh, everybody should have enough money to live, it's also not the only thing that gives us value, uh, being able to work gives value and dignity as well. And so, uh, I appreciate, um, Counselor Donovan playing the devil's advocate there, if you make a system, there's a loophole in the system and someone will find it. I know lots of people who, uh, use the EI system as bonus money while they work for cash all the time and that's, that's the way systems work, there's always a loophole, there's always a way, so, finding a way to give dignity beyond just money is a valuable thing. Thanks.
Cue. Okay, now we have, uh, someone want to come forward?
Sure. Morning? Um, we're from the...
Can you state, just state your names first too, for the record?
I'm Scott McPhail, this is Pierre Chasson. Uh, we're board members with Cape Breton Bible Camp, which is located in District Five, um, and we just wanted to come and, uh, just appeal a little bit the decision to, for the property tax that was levied against us, which is, uh, Pierre, eighteen thousand nine hundred and fifty-one dollars. Um, and just to clear up, maybe, uh, just some operating things, uh, that were discussed, I think, at a previous council meeting. And so, the first is that though we are part of One Hope Canada, we do not have any access to their capital funds, so we're a completely independent organization in that sense, with our own charitable status, our own, uh, registration with the government and everything like that, so we operate on our own operating budget, with no assistance from One Hope Canada. And so, this tax bill actually increases our operating budget by about eleven percent, which is significant, um, when our goal is to provide a very affordable, great experience for kids to come and have a, a week at, uh, camp for the summer. And so, we have low fees and, uh, Nathan, what's the fee for them?
Three hundred dollars for a week for a child to come, uh, which is about fifty percent of the actual cost to have that child there.
So, we, we certainly don't operate, uh, for profit, uh, we don't make a profit, um, and so this is actually a significant, significant, significantly impacts, uh, the camp to have to pay this tax bill. Um, and we also offer, uh, many kids to come to camp for free, so if they can't afford to come, we have a Keep a Camper Fund that we just pay, pay, we just waive their fee to come. Uh, and we have, just this summer from Victoria County, have had seven kids come through that fund. Um, and so, yeah, we just wanted to come and, and just request, uh, that this would be, um, exempt, the taxes, and I know there is a, a bylaw about churches being exempt from this, even though we're a faith-based, um, camp organization, and we, we're proud of that, we're not ashamed of that in any way, uh, but we do have a chapel that operates, uh, at the camp, and so, you know, whether that counts, and it doesn't operate year-round, but many churches in Victoria don't operate year-round, uh, and receive that benefit, so, um, this is a few things, I don't know, Pierre, you have any you wanna?
Yeah, uh, without, uh, uh, our camper fees, um, well, we would be in a deficit of a hundred thousand dollars every summer, just based on camper fees, because we are not operating for a profit, we are actually operating at a loss, and so we depend upon people who donate to, uh, make the camp function. Um, uh, we have a fairly large facility, a lot of upkeep, a lot of costs are involved in that, and, uh, um, the other thing is, is that, you know, you may look at, uh, the chapel services that we have, they're, uh, an hour in the morning, hour and a half perhaps in the evening, and, uh, the activities that are provided for the children and, and all of Cape Breton and some come from the mainland as well, are extensive, like, the, um, uh, we have a jet ski to take kids out on the water, we do, uh, all kinds of games, we have, it's very organized, so lots of recreation, um, we have a playground facility there that is actually open to the community, it's not something that, you know, this is for us. Um, we get, the, the children that come to our camp come from every wharf of life, uh, there's no restrictions upon them, uh, I would say probably fifty percent of the children that come don't go to any church at all, and so we're not trying to, uh, promote denominationalism or, we're just, we're a Bible camp, we, like you said, we know apology for that, but we are looking to serve our community. And also, if you consider the number of people, uh, that are working at the camp, on staff average, will be, Nathan, a week?
Um, between senior and junior staff, we have between twenty-five and thirty staff.
So, yeah, we have twenty-five or thirty staff a week, we try to pay, uh, the older ones because they're, you know, university age or whatever, we wanna have older councillors at the camp, as much as we can afford to do under those circumstances, and that's where those donations come in. But these young people are getting a training that is valuable, I tell you, they're, they're in a cabin for a summer, counseling children, learning how to cope with situations, and these, these are kids from all over that are volunteering to come to camp, and some of them, uh, the younger ones, they come as junior councillors, we try to give them a little stipend for that, and they are getting that kind of training, and then they're training in cleaning and in just being involved in the community and doing things together. It's so valuable to the community, I've been involved in the camp since nineteen ninety-one, and I can tell you all over, uh, the impact that it has had on so many people from all over, from right from, um, Meek Cove to Glace Bay to Port Hoxbury, uh, every place in between. So, um, we're providing a very valuable service and, and to stop and think about it, is there any other camping opportunity that is happening in Victoria County like this? There's none. Uh, there's also, I know only one other camp that I know of that is functioning anymore on the whole island, and it's a very small camp, it's in Cape Breton Dean, I believe it's called.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's, uh, yeah, it's a, it's a denominational camp, but, um, these are the opportunity for kids to come for a week and, and be involved in this. Furthermore, um, the native community, the Mi'kmaq, uh, family services are provide, bringing, sending children to our camp, uh, foster care has used our camp extensively for, uh, reprieve for foster parents to be able to, um, have a break and know that their kids are gonna be in a safe place, so, you know, we're involved with the government here in, in, uh, these kinds of, um, opportunities, so, yeah, we, it's, it's, it's something that maybe you, you're not aware of, what the camp is actually doing, what it's providing for the community. You might be thinking, oh, that's just, they're just pushing religion, we're doing far, far, far more than that, Prince, and, uh, we just want you to become aware that, uh, by putting this, uh, requirement on us to pay a tax where, you know, we're not running a commercial business, uh, it's nonprofit, whatever, uh, funds come in, they go back into infrastructure for paying for, uh, our rising food costs, you wanna send a child to camp where they're gonna be fed, they're gonna be monitored, they're gonna be looked after, they're gonna have all these activities provided for them, and they're gonna pay three hundred dollars? That is a bargain by far, but on top of that, we are offering, we never turn kids away from coming to camp, we provide, if we don't, if they don't, they don't have the money, they come to camp, we don't turn children away. So, our, our goal and our aim is to serve the community, and that's what we've been doing all these years, and suddenly to be hit with this kind of a, of a tax bill, really, I think goes against, um, what I believe that this council wants to do in their community, to support your children and give them opportunity to be able to, um, have this kind of facility available to them. So, we would, you know, respectfully request that we, uh, that be rescinded, um, it will put a burden on us for sure, um, we'll try to continue and do the best that we can, but, uh, it certainly, uh, cramps our style for this, in that regard.
Yeah, I would also like to mention too, we, we host the, uh, the Burn Camp.
Yep.
Um, and also a Drama Camp, and we have pretty reasonable rates, uh, for them to rent, so that they can operate those things there, and that affects all those things, and so, uh, we seek to, to do everything at a reasonable level and never charge very much for what we do. Um, and it truly is a, like a very safe and fulfilling week of camp for kids, and just meets their basic needs, and just to highlight that a little bit, uh, the last thing I mentioned is, even, this might sound silly, but even in regards to lice, we do a lice check, every camps do that in general, other camps just send the kids away, we treat the kids for lice so that they don't get sent home, we do it in a very gentle manner, so no other kid knows that this kid has lice, um, we do every, and we don't charge them anything for that, and, uh, so we make every effort possible to have kids come, and we would certainly appreciate you guys considering this to help us continue to really serve the community, uh, in lots of different ways.
Thank you. Counselor, Mattson and Fort?
I'm gonna give you why I made the decision that I made, and it was purely based on what's represented on your site and the annual income statements, when I look, like, what you're saying is that you're separate from One Hope Canada in this sense. But if I'm looking at the website, it says owned and operated, Cape Breton Bible Campus, one of thirty-nine Bible camps across Canada, owned and operated by One Hope Canada, and if I look up the annual income of One Hope Canada, and it's twenty-one million, if I don't have input otherwise that you guys aren't able to dip into that pot, we're making a decision based on annual revenues that we see.
Fully understand that, yeah.
And then the fact that it's owned by them, so do you come in, for you to come in here and tell us a different story, it's a different story then.
Yes, yes and no, because, uh...
This is our finance, so I can give you guys an overview of it for our camp individually, so we just had a meeting last week, and so we operate completely separate from our...
Yeah, well, and I, I believe you, you're saying it, what I'm saying...
And we've always been a local board, it's a local board that runs the camp.
That just, that ju, that just means they own the title deed to the land.
Let, let Counselor finish.
This is what I'm saying, I, if, if I'm base, I'm going based off the input that we had.
Okay.
That, that, I want you to know that, so it has nothing to do with religious affiliation in that sense, it has to do with, we're owned by this group and this group has an annual revenue of over twenty million, that's, and that's where we're coming from.
Okay.
We understand that for sure.
Thank you. I'll give the...
Yeah.
Yeah, so that, to be owned and operated means that, so our affiliation with One Hope means they have the title deed to the property, because it used to be Canadian Sunday School Missions that owned it, which converted into One Hope Canada, which meant the title deed transferred to them. Um, but really, our affiliation, so they offer us training for staff, which is in the form of videos and different things like that of how to counsel children or what to do in different circumstance situations, uh, and then they'll offer, uh, training to our full-time staff year-round. Um, but in regards to capital projects, operating budgets, One Hope doesn't offer anything to their, uh, local camps, that is, that is up to us to operate, but we are owned by them in the sense that we cannot sell the property, they own the title deed to that, so, um, I, I hope that clarifies that a little bit.
Oh, that, excuse me, well, just one question, well, that, that would be my problem, if they own the property... Well, that, that would be my problem. If they own the property and the deed and they have $21 million, they should be paying your taxes.
Well, I, I don't know about the $21, uh, million dollar thing, but they don't, there's, it's a separate, we, we, we're the ones that end up paying for it. And we don't send money. We aren't sending a portion of the income that comes from the camp. We aren't sending it to, to them. They're not making money.
I know. We understand that. But if I'm the owner of a piece of land and I have somebody on it, it's not up to them to pay the taxes. I, I own, I own the land. I should be the one paying the taxes on the land. Have you gone to One Hope and said, hey, we're, we're struggling here? You guys are a big corporation or a company. Like we said, we only went by what we, we know that...
Can I just bet upon this whole thing for us, just in respect to what you said? So, you're saying...
It's being recorded.
Sorry. My name is Nathan McCosey. I'm the director at the camp. But you stated that personally for you, it wasn't based off of a faith-based decision. The reason we were given as a camp last year and this year that we did not qualify for the grant because we're a faith-based organization. So, whether One Hope Canada has $21 million in the bank or not is irrelevant to the decision that was made by you guys. Because the reason that you say it does was not, well, One Hope has $21 million, go see them. It was, you don't qualify because you're faith-based.
I was going to say that, but go ahead.
Yeah, my comment was a personal one. If we were voting based on personal decisions, because we all carry our own background with us when we make decisions in this council. And I just want to, I'm not saying as, I'm not saying as a representation of council. And decisions that were made last year, it wasn't all of us who were sitting here, anything that was made last year.
Yeah, I guess in regards to that too, though, is, you know, the qualification, qualification should be met, not based on, it should be on a standard, not on a personal preference, right?
One Hope Canada operates, I think, 45 camps across Canada. And so, I don't know if you're looking at the income or, or you're looking at a profit. I don't know what you saw on the state, because I have never heard that figure. I'm not involved with One Hope apart from being chairman of the board here. So, uh, running 45 camps and they're, uh, paying for missionaries, uh, they're, uh, they own all these properties. I don't know where all the money goes. But I would be surprised to think that they have $21 million in the bank. I don't think they do. I, I think that they're, they're running from hand to mouth. But that may, I may be wrong about that. Like how that's, what that assessment is, I'm not sure. Is that their annual income? Is that what you said it was? Or was it their worth? Or what was it? I don't know. I don't know. And that worth could be based upon having 45 camps across Canada. They're paying missionaries, uh, that are involved in the, in the work of One Hope Canada. So, I don't know just what that 21 million actually means. That's a mystery to me. Never heard the figure before.
Well, my, my vote, to be honest with you, was follow the criteria that you are religious-based. It comes across on your site or whatever. You are religious-based. And churches are exempt.
But you said you had two other camps on, uh, you have the Burn and the Drama?
Drama Camp? Have you ever looked into, uh, grants, separate grants for the Burn Camp and the Drama Camp through Victoria County Grants to get money for those camps?
They, they, they have to apply for their own grants to do that. Because we don't run the camp for them. We give the camp to them. And we try to have it organized. So, they have to do that.
They're their own entity, so we can't...
Okay. So, actually, if One Hope Canada owns the land, it should be One Hope Canada that is applying for the property tax exemption. If you folks run a Bible camp, you have the option to apply for any of the other types of grants that we have, operating, developmental, um, the three different types that we have. So, technically, if you don't own the land, you shouldn't be applying for...
Well, we, well, I guess, okay, so this is, this is coming down a little bit to semantics in how your bylaws are governed in Victoria County. Because the bylaws are different in all different jurisdictions, right? But also then how One Hope Canada works. So, we are the local governing body of this property. And so, we are responsible for all the expenses and operating aspects of this jurisdiction for One Hope Canada, let's say. We just call it jurisdiction.
Where do ones get the bill?
Yeah. And so, and we don't, the way that One Hope is set up is we do not have access to any funds that they have. And when, I think, when you look at the gross, um, income of One Hope Canada, our numbers are going to show up in their revenue. So, the revenue that we have is going to be totaled with the other 45 camps in Canada. But that would be like saying, if we totaled up all the revenue for the different counties and then said, well, because Inverness County is really wealthy, like you should make them, you know, do something. It, it, we're an independent camp that is under the umbrella of an organization. And so, you know, I, to continue to push us back to say, make One Hope do something, we're responsible for this camp.
And we understand that. We know that you are an entity under, under this foot. You can't sell the land. Am I right?
Yeah, but many churches can't sell their land.
But...
Right?
But you're, you're not, you're saying you're not a church, though. But you, you are on this land, but you can't sell it, right?
No, we, yeah.
So, really the taxes, they should be asking for the exemption of the taxes.
We, we have asked for the exemption. And we're, yes, because we are the local representative of One Hope in this area for this camp. So, there's, there's no one else from One Hope that is going to apply for these exemptions, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, and, and that's fair. But even outside of who owns the land, uh, so the grant application or the grant process has that religious organizations are not, do not qualify for it. And so, let's say churches, uh, you might argue churches are tax-exempt. Churches are tax-exempt because they are assessed that way. So, they've gone to PVSC, they have a, they have a, an exemption. We don't even get a bill for them. So, is why they are not included. So, the council, including your counselor, we had a, we did a, um, had a fresh look at it this year. The recommendation was made, uh, that we follow a process. We developed a rubric to go along with it. And the process involved not, um, not funding religious organizations. So, that...
Is that not in itself a form of discrimination? It's not? I mean, because essentially it is this group of people who's deciding what values to allow and what values to not allow within the county. And I, I do think that that is relatively inappropriate. That if we're going to have, you know, we, to just decide, you know, we don't value faith-based things, so we won't support them, to me is a form of discrimination.
Uh, I do, I, I don't know where you come from that saying that we don't value a faith-based...
In, in the sense of being willing to support them. So, you know, if you say, we won't support faith-based things financially, there's a level of not valuing them within the community, right?
So, can I ask then, and I'm all for churches receiving your grants, don't get me wrong. I think we need to keep churches, church halls, everything open in our communities. We don't want to see them shut down. But on the list of recipients, uh, St. Ange Bay United Church received a property tax relief grant. So, wouldn't they classify under the same thing as we would? Why not? That's all I'm asking. Why, why would they qualify what we would?
They're, okay. They are in PVC. They're assessed as a church. So, that way they get the exemption.
But if they're assessed as a church, then they're not taxed for property tax being...
They're on your list for approved.
Right? So, if they're a church, they wouldn't, they, they wouldn't get a property tax bill, right? But you guys gave them a property tax relief grant. That's all. I'm just wondering for clarification. And I'm, again, I'm not against that.
I don't mind clarifying some of it. I think what you're seeing is the hall portion. So, there's a community hall?
That's separate on there.
Okay. Because like usually the province will assess the property, whether it's faith-based. They will go and give you that exemption, not the municipality.
Uh, yeah, I mean, the halls are on there as well as being exempt and the church.
And, and then just to clarify, because I know you had asked, um, some questions around income for, for the impact report for, I just pulled it up for 2024. There was $22,912 in revenue from your main company and there was a surplus of over $3 million. And that's reported on your website. Just, just for clarity, because you weren't sure of the numbers.
So, there's not $20 million in the bank. That's what I was saying.
There, there's surplus of over $3 million.
Yeah, I understand that. But $3 million over 45 camps is not a lot of money. You know, if that's, if that's, if we have, I don't know if they're including, I don't know if you could answer that or not, if they're including, we might have $50,000 in our camp.
It would include that, yeah.
It includes that.
And then, and it's just, just because it was reported on here and on top of that surplus, there was almost $4 million taken out of that. Like on top of surplus, that was reinvested back into capital projects. So, it's, there's, there's quite a bit of money there.
Yeah.
Just, just to clarify, because you weren't sure of the numbers.
But it's not $20 million. Yeah, I mean, it's 20 million that came in.
22, 23 million came in and almost $4 million was kept for reserve for capital projects. And there's a surplus of over $3 million.
Right.
Just, just to clarify that.
We're not, we're not here to argue and fight over these things.
No.
We're simply trying to keep this camp open for these kids. It doesn't come down to a group of men and women, you know, sitting around a table for us that are earning money from this. This is going to affect the kids in the long run. And that's why I'm here. I run the camp. I've been there since like seven, eight summer.
So, the, the, the way to do it would probably not be the property taxes. It would be to apply for a grant. So, the grant, it's the same grant application. So, if it's...
If it's in your bylaws, we don't qualify.
That's right.
So, so it would be to apply, not faith-based, but if it's a Burn Camp, everyone here is in agreement.
Apply for that. They're, they're an individual entity.
Who is?
The Burn Camp. The Burn Camp.
So, so you are Cape Breton Bible Camp?
Yes, and they use our property at a discounted rate or they're, like, we, we charge some rental, but it's a very discounted rate.
Okay. So, how many camps do you run a year? Let, let's just, you know, if we just throw some things out.
We're running seven, uh, six to seven full weeks of kids camps.
Okay.
Um, and then weekend camps, uh, we probably do a little four of them.
Okay, so...
Then we have the Burn Camp that is there and then Caution Capers Drop.
So, so two months. What happens the rest of the time on the, on the property? Because there's two PIDs that we're on here that we're looking for tax exemption.
So, so there is a residential PID number there.
Okay.
There is a mini-home on it that we no longer use.
So, so is that part of any of the camp?
It is part of the camp, yes.
So, but it's not in use?
Where I would live at as the director, um, I live in Marbury, so I, and when I stay at...
So, why is yours tax-exempt? Why is your, why where you stay is tax-exempt?
It's not tax-exempt.
Well, you're looking for it to be tax-exempt on that property. You said there's a mini-home.
There's a small portion if you look at it. So, I, I don't know if we applied for that in the tax...
So, there's two PIDs that are here that are looking for it?
Sure. At a residence rate, and I've had a conversation with a few guys. And I, and I even said like, is there a way we could reduce it from a commercial rate to a residential rate for the property? We're willing to pay taxes. We're not against it. It's just that that 19,000 or 18,000 change is, that's a huge hit to us. And it's going to affect the kids in the long run. Camp McCloud is the only other camp operating on Cape Breton right now, and they're struggling. And we're not helping. We don't want to see this shut down. That, you know, that's the big thing for us. And so, we're looking for options like, you know, can we work with you guys in some way, whether it's through the tax relief grant or changing it to a residential rate, whatever it may be that we can work, um, to make this, you know, a positive experience for the kids.
Right. So, that was also a motion that was put forward at that same meeting by Counselor Patterson. And council voted against that as well, just a reminder, to change it from residential to commercial.
I guess part of the issue too is, we have this grant for years and then we...
It has to be in the mic.
Sorry, one of the other issues was, the camp got this grant in years past for many years. And then last year, we didn't get the grant and there was a motion in council, I think, to give it to us. Or I forget what happened last year, but this year, we were just given the tax bill. We don't know the rubric. We didn't know the, you know, we've just filled out the same application every year for a tax grant and been awarded it, and then it was changed from zero.
Yep. So, there was a change in the process in the last couple of years. Prior to that, uh, we were slack. If somebody applied 15 years ago, we just gave it to them. We just kept giving it to them. We didn't check in. So, now we have a process in place. We have a rubric. We make everyone make sure that they are looking into this. They're applying and they're checking off the box. We had, um, an organization that forgot to do it and they came forward and they had to plead their case. So, again, we are making everyone follow a process. And so, uh, we're asking the organizations to follow a process. We're following a process based on councils, recommend, councils approval of a recommendation. And so, the decisions that were made followed to a T what was asked for, to bring to council to vote on.
Okay. So, I guess what we're asking is reconsider those, that rubric. As we are the only camp providing this type of service in the county, it's a kids camp. It's obviously mostly volunteer and, uh, donation funded. We're not, we're presenting to you here, we're not getting $3 million from the parent organization. We're asking you to reconsider for years forward that the camp be, that the camp could qualify for this, that you could make a way for it to qualify. Because this is an 11% increase on our operating and it's going to have a huge effect. Obviously, it's, you know, meat costs more, uh, everything costs more, fuel, bills, everything's inflating. We just want to continue being able to offer, offer this opportunity for kids in Victoria County.
It's actually on your statements for the last, for 2024 and 2023. Property taxes? It is. Cape Breton Bible Camp. So, there's an expense in there for '23 and '24.
Yeah, but then I think you see, like, there are...
Can you come to the mic, please?
Just open on the tax, and you have, there's a, it's way for...
So, it, it's all, you know, it's included in our budget, but it's been included that, um, from this, that the, the tax relief grant, we had been receiving it. So, that's what, like, you know, all of our numbers have to be included when it comes to our finances.
So, what line is the tax relief grant in?
I don't know that it is on the, that I have right here.
Yeah, so your, your reviewed financial statements have, you didn't budget for it, but you had it as, coming out of your general fund for 18,009.6 for 2024. 2023, you have an expense of 15,846, but you still had a profit of 36,469. And in 2024, with that 18,000 in there, you had a profit of 667.
So, that's not truly a profit. That is for our capital funds. We're undergoing major renovations coming up.
No, your capital fund had a surplus of $1,220.
But, but all of it has to, it's all the operating fund. It's not like...
We have to put new washroom facilities in very soon, so we're just trying to save up money to be able to pour back.
Yeah, no, I understand. I understand all that. I, I know numbers. So, just, just letting you know, you did have that in there. It wouldn't actually be an increase of 11% because you've already had it included in your financial statements for the last couple of years.
But it, it actually does increase by 11% because previously we've had the exemption.
Yeah, it's probably an 11% expense, but it's been...
It is an increase.
Yep.
Yeah, we're not, we're not, we're not trying to get out of things that we think we should pay. But we are, uh, you know, sometimes you can make a blanket decision about the way things are, but without actually knowing exactly what's going on. And I would recommend perhaps to the council, maybe do a little bit more investigation before you make a ruling that is so blanketed and it affects, uh, you know, organizations that are suddenly, we're just broadsided, you know, with something we never expected, so.
We're limited right now for the abilities that our kids, our children have to be involved in things. You know, to get your children into sailing lessons here in Bedeck, it's hard to do. There, there's, there's very limited things for kids to do. And that's, that's why it's so passionate for us, is that it's going to make it harder and harder going forward for us to be able to continue to do this. And, uh, I know, you know, some of you have probably been involved, had kids involved in the camp, relatives, friends, or in Camp McCloud. It's, it's a great week for the kids. They get to experience things. I'd encourage you to come out and visit sometime too and see what's happening. We have kids this week, um, that have never swam in a pool before. Hard to believe, right? Like, I don't understand that sometimes when they tell me they've never swam in an outdoor pool. They've never been on a tube behind a jet ski. They've never gone canoeing. You know, these things are, our kids need, especially in today's day and age, right? So, again, we're just, I, I understand you guys make rules and... So, again, we're just, I, I understand you guys make rules and you set them and go forward, but going forward to consider the impact that that has. Like I said, it's not impacting us personally as far as from a financial standpoint, but it's impacting kids being able to come to camp, so.
And, I mean, a week with no screens, what a benefit that is for children, to have a week where they're not glued in front of a screen. Instead, they're involved in activities, they don't, they're allowed to take phones and all that kind of stuff there. If they need to call parents, they go to the main hall. So we, we're providing a service that I think you guys should be a hundred percent behind what's your choices to make. Whatever your rules are, you, you guys have the power to change rules, to make things the way they should be, or what, if there needs to be a change. We put that in your, in your, in your heads, and we just wanted to, you to maybe have a clearer understanding of who we are and what we're doing, so that you would have a better.
Counselor Donovan?
My, my thoughts on this are relatively biased. In nineteen seventy-five, that was a long time ago, I was a camper at the Cape Breton Bible Camp. So I'm, like I said, I'm, I may be a little biased. The issue I'm having, though, is with the fact that One Hope has millions of dollars, they hold the deed to the property, and they don't pay the property tax. I, I don't, I don't get that part.
I, those are things we, we, I'm gonna look into, and I'm gonna, if the house was so likely, I would like to find out exactly what their finances are and how that works, and, you know, what their capital projects are, because relatively, like, I've been on the board, and I'm chairman of the board, since nineteen ninety-one. I think it was one year I was off the board. And we basically run the camp. We don't, we're not involved with One Hope Canada on some great level at all. We, we, we're a local entity that runs the camp. So I don't know, you know, I don't even, like, I never even know what their finances were or what, and it doesn't matter to me what they are. I know what we're doing, I know we keep good books, we have our expenses, we have it, make, we do things the proper way. And if they're assessing that this is how much money they have, and if the amount of money they have is based on, if there's fifty thousand in this camp, if there's another camp that's doing a capital project, they have a hundred thousand in that, if that's the way they're assessing the amount of money that they have, then they probably don't have anybody reading. It's, it's, it's all distributed among all its camps, and a few million dollars distributed among forty-five camps is not very much money.
Especially if you're putting in buildings.
But how, I, you said they don't distribute to you guys, you said they don't, if they're distributing to camps.
No, he, he means.
Like, what's in our, we were saying we had our capital project, did you include in their whole level of trade? So if, if we were building a building for a million dollars, and people donated to our camp to build that building, it would also require that amount of money.
I understand that's how consolidated financial statements work, that has to go that way, that's required.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, no, but you do pay them two thousand dollars a year, what do you get for that money that you pay them?
That's all the training, videos, all the.
So they do offer.
Group insurance.
Group insurance.
Group insurance, those are discounts.
Yeah, we do the insurance through them, so, and then insurance costs is what, fourteen thousand, fifteen thousand dollars a year?
I mean, I know the, like, I think our tax bill is due this month.
Insurance is fifteen thousand. Yep, that's one of your costs.
I think our tax bill's due this month. You know, perhaps if you guys would consider that we could return with, we can talk with One Hope Canada, maybe better explain how the finances is differentiated. And then if, if we could have a hold so that we don't pay the interest on the tax bill until we come back and present those numbers, is that something that is possible?
Whatever you want.
You, Warden?
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand you. So One Canada, One Hope Canada owns the land, you are just subleasing the, well, you are living there, right?
No.
Oh, doing your camp for six, six weeks. So what's going to happen? If you don't pay the tax, you can afford the, the tax. Will be tax sale in, just a scenario for in three years, right? Who is going, do they are going to pay the tax? Because we're going, we're going from them, like, Own Hope Canada, will have to go and pay the tax, because if the deed is in his name. That is, that is the, the main situation here. It's not about that you do the camp for the kids, it's a great program, we are not questioning about your mission and your vision about the community. That's nothing in this table. The problem is right now is, you're asking for exception of the tax, if you own it, that maybe will be another scenario. But you don't own the land. They own the land. If you can bring, you can bring from Own Hope to, you know, they're not going to pay the taxes or whatever, like, explanation, like you was asking, we do our diligence and, and with the documents we have, we make the decision. Now you're coming with another information, it's completely different, how we have. So we are in this point right now, then now we have new information, but we still, I will not agree, because Own Hope owns the land, not you. And is, and I'm just confirming, we are not saying the, the Bible camp or your camp, how you run it, that is no question here in this table. The question is, if somebody owns the land, they have to pay the tax.
Yeah, well.
That's just simple.
The, the issue is.
So I think Own Hope have to come to here and explain why they are not going to pay the tax.
Fully understand that. The issue is, is that every camp is self-running. Now the finances, now the finances are showing on One Hope's books, so that makes it pretty complicated, because you're looking, say, oh, they have millions of dollars. I don't think they do.
That's between you and Own Hope.
I'll find that out for you.
Yeah.
Cause we're the ones that will end up paying the tax.
That's between you and Own Hope, not us and, and you.
So what I'm asking then is, can we have a, can we have a grace period of not paying the interest on the tax bill until the next council meeting where we can present, maybe clarify the relationship between One Hope and us, we can have some solid numbers and have them from the, their home office, maybe provide something that explains how the corporation works better?
I think first they have to come, and, you know, the interest could be extended maybe after, but I can commit just to, to that right now. I will have to have Own Hope here in, in this chair and tell me why they're doing, running that way for the tax. So you need.
I mean, well, in one sense, we can, we can be representatives of One Hope, we're, we're affiliated with them on the board.
Well, I'm just telling you, you say you're going to represent Own Hope, well, you have to pay the tax because you're at Own Hope.
Yeah, well, well.
As, 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 as organization have these statements of three million dollars.
Well, the choice is up to you guys, we do understand that, we respect that, but we are, we made our presentation to you, we, I will try to get some more information to you about how One Hope operates and what their, how that financial picture looks. If it looks like they're sitting with twenty million dollars in a bank account in Winnipeg, well, that's one thing. But if it's representative of all the funds that are distributed everywhere, whatever, in savings and building projects, and, then that's a whole different picture altogether. But nevertheless, that's the decision that you're, you're, the council has to make, and we'll have to live with whatever your decision is. We're not being disrespectful whatsoever.
No, not at all, it's just.
We would encourage you maybe to take a look at what you're saying, what's exempt and what's not exempt, and maybe be a little bit more defining so that you're not hurting organizations that are actually helping your community, that's, that's what we would encourage you to do.
Okay.
Revisit your motion, maybe, and say, okay, we, we've, we've just made a blanket motion, and we're, we're throwing the people under the bus as a result of it. If that's the case, change the motion, you have the power to do that, we just.
And also too, just to consider, the only reason we were told we were no longer gonna not get the qualification for this is because we're faith-based. They had nothing to do with revenue ever in any communication. And so, to me, that is, it's like we're being told something here that we weren't being told in, in letters or communication from you either. So that, that created some confusion as well, I think, then.
Final word, Deputy Warden?
Yeah, just for clarification, maybe the Bible camp is based religion, but you have another two more campers, right? The burn, burn camp and then not.
They're rentals.
They're rentals, yeah.
Yeah.
But that's organizations can apply.
Wait, we're past our ten minutes?
Warden, could I just say?
Go ahead.
Close up. I'd like to thank you, gentlemen, for coming. First of all, I spoke to some of you and got emails from others. I don't wanna speak for the rest of the council, but I have a much clearer picture of, and I think we, we wanna find out about the relationship between One Hope Canada. Whether we can waive the interest or not, I'm not sure, but I'm sure we can work something out, you know, if, if there's a change or whatever. So again, thanks for the discussion. As the warden said, we're a little over the ten minutes, but we, I think it had to be done. And again, thanks for coming, and maybe, before you leave, Steph, will you have a date for the next meeting? No?
Seven tomorrow.
Okay, tomorrow. And maybe we could schedule them on the agenda, let you know. Instead of having it during the question period, maybe we could schedule it on the agenda for me, so. Okay, thank you.
Contact Steph and bring your information to the next council.
We'll do best to handle that, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your listening here, we appreciate.
I appreciate what you guys have to do, and it's not easy to understand that, but thank you.
We appreciate that very much, giving us an ear.
Can I call for an adjournment? Moved by Counselor Matheson LaFord. Adjourned.